Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call our study session to order. First item on the agenda is the oath of office, so councilmember September, are you ready?
Is this on? There we go. If I could get Leslie Davis, would you come on up? Our new planning commission members, Mr. Fay and Mr. Johnson, could you please join me up here for the reading of the oath of office? So you guys are gonna raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona and the ordinance of the town of Gilbert, Arizona, or town of Gilbert, Maricopa County, Arizona. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of the town of Gilbert Planning Commission member in Gilbert, Arizona, according to the best of my ability, so help me God. Thank you very much.
Okay, and Keith, you are here. We are up with you and we're general plan and zoning for Bellastoria. Alright, there we go. Planning Commission members, good evening. I know there's a few new planning commissioners that I wasn't in the little, our meeting a little bit earlier. So my name is Keith Newman and I'm one of the senior planners here for the town and I will be presenting Bellastoria tonight. So Bellastoria, excuse me. Bellastoria is a proposed master planned community that is located at the north west corner of Power Road and Williams Field Road and you can see it highlighted there on the screen in front of you. The land is currently owned by the DeBella family and it is all within Maricopa County currently and is not annexed into the town. So this application will propose to do that. So the application request tonight before you is a proposed general plan amendment on 7.1 acres and I'll break it down a little bit so you can see the property's much larger than that. The overall acreage of the property is about seven, a little over 70 acres in size. So that will be going on that 7.1 acre piece. It will be going from, the general plan designation will be going from general commercial to residential, 14 to 25 dwellings per acre. And then there is a proposed PAD rezone and some deviations that I'll discuss with you. So the property, as I stated, is in Maricopa County. So there's a 30, about 30.94 acre portion of it that will go from, of course, go from Maricopa County rural to multifamily medium. A 24.94 acre portion will go from single family, or from, obviously all of them are going from Maricopa County rural. So it'll go to, it'll be single family detached. A 16.5 acre portion will be zoned, is proposing to be zoned to general commercial. And then a 7.25 acre portion of the property is proposed to go to single family attached zoning. So there's quite a few zoning districts that are involved with this master plan. So as far as the existing zoning, this will help, kind of help you visualize it a little bit more. So you can see in that top right-hand corner, all the red is currently what's zone general commercial or what we're proposing to zone general commercial today, or it's zoned in the county in those designations today. And then you can see the brown is zoned resid, it's, I mean, sorry, this is not zoning, it's general plan, sorry. So that's what our general plan looks like today. And then you'll see the next exhibit is what we're proposing to change it to. So you'll see that red in the top right-hand corner, which is general commercial, that will be going away and going to, or proposed to go to residential 14 to 25 dwelling units per acre. And then the general commercial, let me go back one slide. So that general commercial's about 19 acres, that will be decreased in size to about 16.58 acres. And then the rest of it, to the left, to the west of that will go also to residential 14 to 25. So you can kind of see, see the change if I flip back and forth of, as what the applicant's proposing, proposing from a general plan perspective. From a zoning perspective, the whole site, like I stated earlier in the introduction, is zoned rural 43 in Maricopa County. And it will be annexed, or proposed to be annexed, excuse me, and proposed zoning change, zone change to all these different zoning districts you see here on the screen. So you'll see there's SFD parcel A and then you'll see below that is SFA, which is another parcel. And then you'll see parcel B, which is multifamily medium and another parcel of multifamily medium, which is parcel C. So we've got a bunch of residential and then you'll have the commercial corner on the corner, which is a little over 16 acres of commercial, so, which it's already general plan, commercial today, it's just shrinking in size a little bit, that commercial corner. I'll show you the development plan and it'll all make a little more sense. So the proposed development plan, so we'll start with the commercial, the whole site's about 79 acres in total. So there will be a total of 63 acres of residential at about 13.48 dwelling units per acre, which it's, that's gonna go up a little bit due to some comments that we have made. But, so it will be about that from a density standpoint, for the whole project, that's combining the multifamily and all the single family together. It will be 13 and a half dwelling units per acre. So then there'll be 13, 30.94 acres of multifamily, 851 units between the two different apartment complexes that are proposed, one along Power and one along Williams Field. And then 32 acres of single family and 238 lots of single family and you can see that at the north end of the project behind those apartment, proposed apartment complexes. And that's adjacent to some existing single family to the west that's in Cooley Station. And then to the north is some existing business park zoning. And then, of course, as I've already stated, we have the commercial corner on the corner of Power and Williams Field that's 16.5 acres of commercial. So that's, here's the prettier picture of the development plan. Kind of, kind of looks a little nicer, a little easier to read, in my opinion. So you can see all of the different land uses and all the different zoning districts, they're all kind of color coordinated. So just wanted to show you that really quick. And I just wanted to show you some site renderings, kind of see the pretty picture on how everything kind of fits together and how it would kind of sort of look. So you see in this rendering, this rendering is looking from, on Long Williams Field Road, there's a street that goes north of Williams Field called Somerton. So this is looking off of Somerton Boulevard, looking towards the east, towards Power Road. So you can see the apartment complex right there on the corner. Behind it, to the north, you can see all the single family, you have single family attached and detached. You can see the relationship between the single family and the multifamily and the commercial. And then you have the commercial on the corner and then the apartment complex way in the northeast corner, so you can kind of see the relationship. And I'll kind of flip through these so you can see, here's the commercial center that they're proposing right now and you can see that horizontal relationship with the apartments and with the residential from a different angle. And then here's another shot of, a kind of a little village center portion of the commercial. And then here's that apartment complex again that's over off of Somerton Boulevard. And these are four-story apartments. Okay, so some of the deviations, I'll try to go through these a little quickly. So some of the deviations that are being proposed, this is for the commercial zoning district. They have setback deviations that are proposed going from 25 or 20 feet along some of the roadways down to 10 and 5 feet. Staff has discussed, has commented and made comments to the applicant that we do not support that. That is just too much of a setback for town staff to support. If you look further to the west along Williams Field Road, you will notice that within Cooley Station, which is a dense village core, commercial type of area, the smallest setback that we have allowed in Cooley Station, which is a little more dense from a commercial standpoint than, than this area, even though they're both still in the gateway character area, is about, that setback's about 20, 18, 18 feet is the closest we have allowed. So we've asked the applicant to make some adjustments there. The next slide is for the multifamily medium deviations. They're proposing some setbacks to the building step back as units are adjacent across the street from single family. So they're proposing for that to be 90. We have been meeting with the applicant, that deviation may or may not stand as we move forward. We're trying to get them to kind of work with that 100-foot step back requirement. And then also the rear setbacks along, along the eastern boundary of the project, they want to reduce those by 5 feet. And then private open space, they want to reduce that by 10 square feet per unit, which we, which we don't support that deviation either. And then also the common open space, they want to reduce it from 40% to 32%. So that is another deviation that staff is, is trying to work with the applicant on and we're not, at this point in time, we're not in support of that deviation. So parcel C, which is, which is the other multifamily piece up along Power Road, they're really only proposing one deviation and that is to go from 40% open space to 39.28%. We think we can get them to meet that 40%, so that deviation may not be coming back before you. And then lastly, actually I think there's two more. SFD, which is the single family detached, they want to decrease the minimum lot area from 3,000 to 2,300. And then also the lot coverage for two and three-story units from 50 to 65%. So we're still kind of working with the applicant on that, we don't know yet if those numbers will stand. But, but I think we're in support of those, those deviations as they stand at the, at the current time. But we're, like I said, we're still early on in the review and still kind of working through some things. And then SFA, kind of the same thing, the set, so that setback, that rear setback, that'll actually be going away because they measured it from the curb line instead of the middle of the alley. So that, they actually do meet that rear setback of 10 feet. So that deviation will go away. And then we still have the same other deviation, the two and three-story building lot coverage. And then separation between buildings from 15 down to 10, which is, which is something that we have supported in a lot of developments. So I think we'll be okay with that deviation. So those are all of the deviations. And, and I failed to mention as I was going through these slides that we have the actual parcel highlighted for you so you can see what deviations go with what, which parcel. Cause I know it gets a little confusing and there's a lot of parcels and there's a lot going on. So through the review process, there's a few things that we do want your feedback on and I will talk about those at the very end. But before I did do that, I want to let you know that we had two, we had a virtual meeting in January of this past year and only two surrounding property owners attended and they had some basic questions. They just asked about the potential, if there's a potential grocery store and if there was, if the units were gonna be only two stories will be proposed and things like that. So very minimal comments, they, both residents seem to be in high, in, in favor of the project as a whole. So as far as the requested input that I wanted to talk to you about before I end, and I know that there's a much, there's some other items on the study session, so I don't want to take up too much more time. But in the first review, we've been working with the, with the staff, with the applicant on, on a few things. So the horizontal integration between the single family and the multifamily and the commercial. We wanted to kind of get your feedback on that because staff is, we're a little bit concerned about some of that horizontal integration, especially when it's concerned with, with pedestrian accessibility. Where, we had a meeting with the applicant last week to talk about that and we think that some of their, their drawings and their exhibits don't, don't do it justice yet as to what they're proposing as far as the sidewalk connections and the units fronting, fronting the streets and so we want to kind of give it that, that, a different look and feel from that standpoint and have, have units that are along, even apartment units that are along roadways or streets to have units that have direct pedestrian access out to a street to help that integration be furthered. And especially next to the commercial as well, to have those units have direct sidewalk accessibility to a commercial, to the commercial development. So we're working with the application, the applicant on that and we've had a meeting about that to discuss that. And then the last one, I already, I kind of already talked about it with the horizontal integration with that pedestrian access. So kind of want to get your thoughts on what you think about that. One exhibit that you'll, you'll notice really quick is, and then I'll be done, is this exhibit. It's actually, sorry, not that one. Thought I had a different view of that. This, yeah, this one. So this is the street, it's Haskell Street that comes in off of Somerton. So this is that transition between the multifamily along Williams Field and the, and the single family to the north along, in the back of the project or to the north end of the project. You'll see that the, those single family units front this street that has been created. And at first glance, they look like rear yards. So we made a comment in our first review comments that they need to make sure that those units front that street. Similar to the development pattern, it's already been established on Haskell further to the, the west within Cooley Station. But we have been assured by the applicant that those units will front the street. It's just that it wasn't represented that way in the, in the, this early site rendering. So that those unit, those units will front the street and that horizontal integration and that pedestrian connectivity out to that street will be provided. So I just wanted to, to, to put that in there. But other than that, that's all I really have for you for my presentation. I know that that's a lot of information and that's a mouthful. But I just wanted, we wanted to get your feedback on, on what you thought of, of this development as a whole. And, and also, my brain's really scattered. I just got back from a, a, a mountain trek back in the woods, like literally at 4 o'clock and showered and got here. So my brain is going in like 50 different directions. So, so I apologize if I'm backtracking and going all over the place, I apologize. So the last thing I wanted your feedback on is the commercial portion of the development. Staff is highly concerned with the design of the commercial portion of this development. We feel that it does not meet the character of, that we're trying to create in the sand tan character area as there are a lot of drive-throughs along Williams Field Road and along Power Road. And it looks like a typical, traditional suburban shopping center and not something that we're trying, that, that kind of complies with or, or meets the vision of what we want to create in the gateway character area. The villi, the, that portion to the east of it, which is kind of a little village center, that we actually think is a good design for the shopping center. That kind of meets that vision of what we're looking for. But the whole east, the whole east side of the shopping center, we feel is just too traditional, too suburban and we want it to be buildings a little bit closer to the street, drive-through lanes be hidden a little more. Maybe larger buildings with pedestrian access out to the streets and things like out to Power and Williams Field Road. Kind of create a more compliant design that makes it look more like Cooley Station, even though it's not in Cooley Station, but it's still in the gateway character area. So I kind of want to get your thoughts on that. So with that, that concludes my presentation and I'm sorry I've been jumping all over the place. I, I'm just, my brain is fried, but I appreciate your patience with me. So hopefully I can answer your questions.
Thank you, Keith. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments for Keith? Anybody like to kiss off? Yeah, Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Johnson.
There I am, green. When you look at the residential area, my concern is on the deviations, especially in the single story where you go from 15 to 10-foot separations. It seems like the developer's packing as many units in as possible. And I call that love your neighbor, whether you like them or not, separations between buildings. You're gonna hand your yesterday's lasagna over to them because it's only a 10-foot separation. So my concern generally, and looking at some similar developments in Gilbert, is packing in units. I know it's, you know, that it's economically good for the developer, but I really don't think it's sound planning in terms of a separation of units to create a better quality of life, especially in the single family areas. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Anybody else like to go? Commissioner Bianchi.
So Keith, has the applicant stated if any of the single family homes are planned to be rentals along with the multifamily? Are they gonna be owned?
Chair Simon, Commissioner Bianchi, I don't believe they're going to be rented or units, I think they're all going to be owned. But you can ask the applicant that, but I haven't seen that information. I, I believe they're all going to be owned units.
Okay. And then my next question was, so I think based on the staff report, minus an approved site, master site plan, I think I counted 19 deviations with the PAD request. Are they planning on submitting a master site plan for consideration?
Chair Simon, Commissioner Bianchi, yes, they will be doing that during the design review stage. They will be submitting a master site plan that we will review with a lot of detail. So yes, that will be happening.
Okay. I think as far as general feedback, I, I think the GP request seems minor and reasonable kind of given that orphan, general commercial parcel. I understand the rezoning request, kind of given the general plan designations and the gateway character area, but just the sheer amount of number of deviations that we're being presented with will take more of a convincing for me, kind of given the fairly standard site plan and the auto-centric site plan that you talked about along with the commercial layout. Thanks.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner Davis.
Alright, hopefully that's on. Keith, I'm generally in agreement with what your concerns are, particularly regarding the pedestrian connectivity. One of the things I was looking at is for the, I believe it's the Pad B apartments down at the, kind of the southwest corner. You've got that amenity area that's kind of isolated in a lot of parking. I appreciate the buildings are all around the edges. I think that's great and I do agree they should have that pedestrian connectivity to the street. But I would like to see them do something to connect those units to that open space area and also with the number of deviations that there. Including in this, I think great open space is an important component of that. And so I'm not seeing that yet, so I guess I'm in agreement with staff on all of that.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Commissioner Fay.
Thank you, Keith. I'm glad that I'm not, usually I'm the one who's kind of standing on the, they're packing it in and I'm glad people are, I'm not, I'm not the only one. I have no particular concerns with parcel C or the general commercial. Parcel B, the, the multifamily strikes me as a, basically a packed it in too much. I, I mean, they got pretty close and I could probably be convinced if everything else was. But, but A is, to me is problematic. It, it is, as Commissioner Johnson said, it's really packed in and needing deviations to pack it in. And I actually think it's worse than it looks because of that parcel A1. I, I assume that that's just because the alignment of the road, they've got that kind of orphan slice up there and they're gonna use it for drainage. But they're counting, I'm sure, that as open space, which it's, it's almost not even part of the parcel anymore, but it, it exacerbates the, you know, the purpose of open space in my mind is to put space where people are, either in terms of shade trees or where people are interacting or walking their dogs or whatever. And this is, is, it, I mean, it counts, I, I get it, but it, it makes the deviation even harder to swallow. And I was looking at, yeah, I definitely did not have the impression that these houses were gonna face out onto Haskell cause it looks like there's a road behind them that I thought, so. Good, good on, on that one. I mean, I, I guess I don't actually care that much, but if, if it doesn't look like that, definitely in the way it's been presented. But I, I would say if it was coming forward with the design, for a design or a design plan, plan layout and we were really drilling into the deviations tonight, this would be a very hard sell. B, maybe, but A, I'd have a very hard time going with. B, maybe, but A, I, I'd have a very hard time going with it, okay?
Thank you.
Right. Anybody else? Commissioner Anderson.
Uh Keith, thank you for the presentation. Uh, just one general question for you. Because this is a PAD, if this was approved tonight, they're essentially approving the site plan, right? So once they go to DR, they can't deviate from what we're seeing on the site right now. Is that correct?
Um Chair Simon, Commissioner Anderson, that is correct. If, once this development plan is approved by council, um, yes, this will, this will lock in the design that you see on the screen. And when they come in for the DR case, which actually, I don't know when that's actually going to happen, but it will have to be in substantial conformance with the development plan that's approved by the plant, by the town council. Yes, that's correct.
Alright, so substantial conformance could mean that they could make some minor adjustments to the site.
Correct, minor adjustments.
Alright. Um, I pretty much support you on your stance on all the deviations, especially the one on the, the parcel that's GC and those setbacks along the front side. I mean, five feet from Williams. I don't, I, that's awfully tight and I support you on that, um, your stance on that. In terms of, you know, so talking about the site now that we know it's um, kind of, this is what would get, would get locked in. The only concern I would have on the site is on the commercial portion where the angled parking is. It's only that one drive there and if they can make that ninety-degree parking, I think that'd be a lot better. Um, the only concern I have that with that is every time that I drive in those certain areas, you always have person, somebody heading one direction, they see a parking spot on the other and they do this weird U-turn or three-point turn to get into it. And it just kind of creates a, a safety concern there. So if they could modify that to ninety-degree parking, that would be very helpful. Those are all my questions and comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any others?
Um Keith, my concern with this, I, actually my question, first question I have for you, are they meeting open space? I mean, obviously there's a lot of parking lot in this, but with regards to the residential, are they meeting open space there as well as the other areas?
Uh Chair Simon, so as far as from the open space standpoint for the apartment complexes, they're, they're not meeting it. So one of them, they're proposing like a thirty, to go to have like thirty-two percent open space where forty percent is required. The, and that, that's parcel B down in the north in the southwest corner. But the apartment complex in the northeast corner is only like a pers, like point eight percent away from meeting the open space requirements. We're fairly confident we can get them to, to meet that. But parcel B down in the northwest corner is a little more of a struggle. Um, as far as the commercial and the single family, yes, they, they are meeting their open space requirements. It's just that, those two apartment complexes are the locations or the portion of the development that are not currently meeting the open space requirements. And we, we had a meeting with the applicant last week. Hopefully they will get closer to that forty percent and, or meet it completely. So that's something that we're still working with them on.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to see some work done there. Uh, the other, I, I share the concern of the other commissioners who um, have agreed with you with regards to the setbacks and the deviations that are being requested. I feel like it's pretty rich on what they're requesting. I also personally have an issue with regards to the apartment. I think that would be the southwest corner, I guess, if I'm looking at it correctly. I feel like that does not bode for any connectivity to anything in my mind when I look at it. I mean, it's, it looks institutional to me. I feel like the buildings on the exterior with really no amenities to draw. I, I just, it, to me, it doesn't speak well. Um, understand that there is a character area there, but we're right up against the character area for um, Cooley Station. And I feel like being able to draw that across, um, from there. I, I, I think I'm good. Though you asked with regards to horizontal integration, I, again, I think that goes along with my comments that I just made. I just don't know that I'm necessarily on board with where they're at with the, the entire connectivity. I think there's some work that can be done there, so.
Okay.
Alright. Unless there's any other comments, thank you Keith.
Alright, thank you. Appreciate it.
Um, Ashley, um, are, is Rivellon being continued or are you going to present on this?
Uh Chairman, I do have a presentation for the study session item. That's the design review. And then the, the other items on the agenda are being continued.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you Chairman and Commissioner. This is DR twenty-two, one forty-three. It's Stillwater Rivellon. Uh, the site is located within the larger Rivellon master plan development, uh, which is located between Gilbert Road and Lindsay Road on the south side of Pecos, um, between the, Pecos and the two oh two. It is interior to the site as you can see on this, on this map. Directly accessed off of Rivellon Boulevard and La Arbolita, which are uh, under construction or, or nearing completion of construction. Uh, looking at the vicinity map, the site is currently zoned business park. Um, as I had indicated earlier, there are companion applications uh, accompanying this that would need to receive approval by uh, town council prior to the design review. Uh, coming before the planning commission uh, for a, a potential approval. Um, so we are looking at rezoning this site to multifamily high. Uh, so the, getting into a little bit more specifics about the site, it's a ten-point-three acre site, which is part of the larger two-hundred-and-eighty acre Rivellon development. Um, as I mentioned, they are requesting that general plan amendment from general office to residential twenty-five to fifty dwelling units per acre, along with the rezoning and PAD amendment to change from business park to multifamily high. Um, so you will see those uh, applications coming before you for uh, recommendation. In the future, they are on your agenda today, but we are asking for a continuance of that to November. Uh, still thought it worthwhile to get some feedback on the design review application. Uh, looking at the site plan, um, it is, as I mentioned, located interior to the Rivellon development. So it doesn't receive direct access from an arterial roadway. It's accessed off of Rivellon Boulevard and La Arbolita. Um, I've identified those access points here. There's a lot of connectivity between this development and the rest of the Rivellon development. Primary access points, again, being off of Rivellon Boulevard to the south, La Arbolita to the east, uh, along with some connection points to the Rivellon Commons um, area to the west. They also are providing uh, pedestrian connectivity. This is designed to be an interconnected development. Uh, and so they've provided a number of access points to connect to future development to the east, future development to the south. Um, the Rivellon Commons, uh, which houses uh, quite a bit of office development. And is, in terms of the, the plan itself, they're proposing two separate buildings. Highlighted in yellow on the screen, um, at the north end of the site is a garage building. So there would be uh, garage units for the residents. There's also tuck under garage within the building itself and then at the center of the site is where the, the primary residential building is located. With regard to the landscape plan, the street frontage landscaping is, is installed with the roadway improvements. And so what we're looking at with this design review is really just onsite landscaping. It's pretty consistent with the, the Rivellon planting palette. We are very early in the review um, of this project. So in terms of open space requirements and things like that, we're still evaluating those with the applicant um, for compliance. The primary uh, item that I'm seeking commission feedback on tonight is the elevations. Uh, these are the north-south elevations. So what you would see uh, from future office building to the north of the site and from Rivellon Boulevard to the south. Uh, they are utilizing a variety of materials, stucco, brick, fiber cement, um, for, for a wood-like siding. And then these are the east-west elevations. They, they contain very similar um, features. Uh, staff is, is curious if the commission feels that there's a, uh, too repetitious of a pattern with these buildings. And so just seeking some general feedback on um, this large of a building. The applicants also provided some rendering so you can see in, in a little bit better detail, um, the richness of the materials. And then I also uh, thought that it was important to share with you what is immediately adjacent, just for, for context. So this is a Rivellon Commons building. This is what's located to the west. Um, similar product will, uh, is in for review to the north of the site as well. So this is um, what it's designed to complement. Um, and with that, I, I'm just seeking commission feedback on those elevations.
Alright, thank you Ashley. Anybody like to start us off? Any questions or comments? Commissioner Davis?
Um, Ashley, I thought this was a really elegant project. I really liked the kind of, you know, it might be a little repetition, repetitious, but I also think it's kind of elegant. I really like the soffit material being the composite wood. I think that's, you're really going to perceive that with the height of these buildings. And that it's under those patio covers and follows all around. From what I could tell, it looks like under the windows, the brick is changing course and going um, vertical instead of horizontal. Is that what's happening um, under the windows? In the renderings, it looks like it's almost like a breeze block or some other kind of material, but.
Yeah, Chairman and Commissioner, it is hard to tell and um, the, the elevations uh, don't really um, help that much either uh, to see. So we will be looking for some additional information on that.
Okay. Um, I didn't have a big problem either with um, the roof lines. I think it's kind of, it doesn't step a whole lot, but I think it would get kind of birthday cakey if you started to pop it up and down too much on this one. I kind of like the way the, the roof is kind of coming over, you know, with a large overhang over some of those other pieces of the building, but I liked this one. It's going to be kind of hidden, which is a bummer, but it's good for the neighborhoods, I guess, that it's further back in, so.
Alright, thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner Bianchi.
So Ashley, I think you kind of touched upon it. Is there anything planned or proposed adjacent to these buildings to kind of help it blend in with the, the area directly around it?
Yeah, so uh, Chairman and Commissioner Bianchi, to the west um, exists the Rivellon Commons development. There's four office buildings. We do have in review um, building E, which is just to the north of this project, which is uh, intended to, to be very similar to Rivellon Commons, which is to the west. Um, east of the, of the subject site across all La Arbolita, uh, there are no plans at this time that have been submitted or um, talked about with staff.
Okay, which direction do you say?
Uh, to the east, so on the east side of La Arbolita, yeah.
So the other question, if we go back to the elevation, I guess my question is, if they're asking for the additional height, is that kind of taking away any flexibility they have to do any details or variations along that roof line? Because of the, the increased in height, so basically we're just getting more units and another floor.
Chairman and Commissioner, they would be limited to the request under their zoning, which, which is to increase the height of that building. So they would be limited by that. Our code does allow for additional height for um, parapets or for screening of mechanical units up to five additional feet. Um, so we would have to take a look at, you know, where, where they are and where they added that additional height if that impacted the, the height that they're allowed.
I think as, as far as my general feedback goes, I would like to see some features or variation along the roof line. It looks a little too stark and too linear. Um, my preference, I guess, would be that the design be a little more in line with the office buildings adjacent to it and constructed in Rivellon with that character. Kind of with that focus on the glass and maybe perhaps stone over the brick. Again, that's just my preference. Um, I do like the way the amenities have been kind of located internal to the site and the building envelope. But I, again, like I had said, I think we might be a little limited due to that max height because we're giving up that flexibility with that for those additional units and additional floor. So, thank you.
Great, anybody else? Commissioner Johnson.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I think Rivellon starts off really well because it's one of the best gateway projects in the entire town. You know, that, that uh, big cascade, very well designed. My question is, you know, these things seem to pop up everywhere in, in Gilbert. Four-story packed in, uh, the, the site plan is parking in the middle. Is there some way in the plan that you can develop some thematic material that starts like with the gateway of Rivellon and repeats that throughout the project? So you knew, you know, basically, you know, there's a lot of good character areas. Rivellon, I think, has a potential to be a character area in terms of commercial development by having something thematically, architecturally, or landscaped or otherwise that characterizes it not just as more four-story or five-story buildings uh, that are packed in, but something that gives us sort of a character in terms of the overall design, uh, in terms of landscape and other things, other portals or whatever, because it starts well and then it's continue. I think the overall Rivellon area is a good idea, you know, in terms of urban design to have that sort of commercial development. But it starts well and it continues with the, some of the same old, same old in terms of these kinds of buildings. So I think there's a real potential to make, to wrap up Rivellon as really a character area, not just as a ongoing commercial development with more of these big apartment complexes popped into the middle. Uh, so I don't have anything against apartment complexes. I just think in terms of overall design, we have an opportunity to create Rivellon as really thematically a very special place in the community. Thank you.
Right, anybody else? Commissioner Faye.
Just, overall, I'm, I'm supportive, very supportive of the project. It looks fine to me. Just eyeballing it or using my calibrated thumb, it, it doesn't look like they'll hit their open space. They say they do. Um, a real quick cursory, I think they're going to come up quite a bit short, but you know, I've been surprised there's things that I'm sometimes not counting. So when this comes forward for real, I'd, I'd like to see some more detail or have, have um, Tom and hypothetically even Dave doing his job. And uh, um, and, and actually validating that, that, that that is all there, okay, please?
Sure. Uh, Chairman and Commissioner Faye, that is one of the reasons for the continuance, the design review. Um, did uncover that we are, we are a little short on that open space, so we're taking a pause to evaluate that. So your, your calibration was accurate.
So what you're saying is this thumb is the right size?
It is.
So any other comments, questions for Ashley? No? I'll add my two cents. Um, Ashley, I actually think that this is a great project in this area. I think it's definitely needed to support um, the development that's actually going on there. From an overall aesthetics perspective, I don't have an issue with it. I think the three D renderings give us a better idea of what the overall building will look like. Um, and so for me, I'm in full support at this point with it. Obviously, when it comes to us to make a decision on, there may be different questions, but at this point, I'm good with it, so.
Alright.
Chairman and Commissioner.
Thank you. Alright, um, we will move on to the discussion of the regular meeting agenda and we do have some changes here. Um, so bear with me as I muddle through this. We have, my understanding, um, the consent agenda items, um, item number eight. We have somebody here who wishes to speak um, on Morrison Ranch two. So we'll be moving that off of consent onto the non-consent agenda items. Uh, the ranch, obviously we'll be hearing of that. Uh, Morrison Ranch Commercial Center, we have that. The um, will be continuance of uh, Stillwater Rivellon. So both items twelve and thirteen, I would recommend we move to um, consent unless there's anybody who wishes to speak on either of those items. Um, item fourteen and fifteen will stay. Uh, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, um, for various reasons would be either continued tabled. Or recommend moving to consent unless anybody would like to hear or speak upon any of those items.
So all, all of those items are being continued and they're, the move to continue them is being moved to consent?
No. Um, item seventeen, um, I would just recommend moving to consent. Um, item sixteen, I would recommend moving to consent um, as approved unless somebody would like to hear those. Item sixteen is to be continued to November second, nineteen, uh, continued to November second. Twenty and twenty-one, both would be tabled at this point. Did I miss any? I think I've got all of those. So. Uh, I'm recommending seventeen move to consent unless somebody would like to hear on it. Correct. Are there any objections, objections to that or does anybody want to hear any of those items that I just listed? And we don't have any uh, comment cards from community members. Does anybody want to submit a card on, on any of those items? Alright, not hearing any. We'll go ahead and take a quick five-minute break and we'll come back to regular meeting. Um, with that, I go ahead and adjourn our study session. Um, with that, I go ahead and adjourn our study session. Okay, if everybody could take their seats, we're going to go ahead and get started. Maybe, where did Eva go? Yeah, we're going to wait for Eva because she's not back yet, so hold with us one minute.
Chairman Simon? I'm sorry, there are still cards that are being filled out, so I'll bring those down momentarily.
Okay, should we give it another couple of minutes? Are we ready to start?
We're ready to start if you are.
Okay, so I will go ahead and call um, our regular meeting uh, to order. And with that, we will go ahead and uh, start with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you'd all rise. All right, Eva, can I have a roll call, please?
Alternate Johnson? Alternate Gage? Commissioner Davis? Commissioner Anderson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Fay?
Present.
Commissioner Blazer? Commissioner Bianchi?
Here.
Vice Chairman Munt? Chairman Simon?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, I will uh, go ahead and we had some discussion. We've got some um, changes on the um, agenda. But I'll go ahead and entertain a motion as we discuss the agenda.
Chairman, uh, with the changes based since we discussed in study session, I would move to approve the agenda uh, with the following changes. Moving item eight to the public hearing non-consent calendar and items sixteen, eighteen, twenty, and twenty-one to tonight's consent agenda.
Second to motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second by Commissioner Johnson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Right, motion carries. Uh, with that, um, we will go to communications. Communications uh, from citizens, at this time, members of the public may comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the town, but not on the agenda. The commission response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Do we have any, uh, buddy here that would like to comment um, on any item that is not on the agenda? All right, not seeing any. We'll go ahead and go to a report from council, Councilmember September.
Chairman, uh, in, in the interest of time tonight, and there's so many people here that need to be heard, I'm going to forego any updates this evening and just make time for the other speakers. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. All right, with that, we are going to go to um, item number eight on our agenda. That is DR twenty-two dash one oh two Morrison Ranch Two. Noah, do you want to give us a quick um, overview on that or? All right.
Chair, can I jump in? I need to abstain from this.
Okay, Commissioner Anderson is going to abstain. I'm sorry, Noah, really quick, I was just informed that I forgot to read something that I'm supposed to read, so. Um, public hearing consent, all items listed below are considered uh, public hearing consent calendar. The commission uh, may by a single motion approve any number of items where after opening the public hearing, no person requests the item be removed from the consent calendar. If such a request is made, the commission shall with, uh, then withdraw the item from the public hearing consent calendar for the purpose of public discussion and separate action. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent calendar and approved under a single motion. Do I have approach, a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
Commissioner, I'd make a motion to approve the consent as currently, currently situated.
All right, I've got a motion by Commissioner Fay to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, second by Commissioner Johnson, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, not hearing any. We will move now, move on to um, our public hearing, non-consent public hearing items. Um, will be heard at an individual public hearing and will be acted upon by the commission by a separate motion. During public hearings, anyone wishing to comment in support of or in opposition to a public hearing item may do so. If you wish to comment on a public hearing item, uh, you must fill out a public comment form indicating the item number on which you wish to be heard. Once the hearing is closed, there will be no further public comment unless requested by a member of the commission or board. And I apologize for jumping the non-consent. I was just so excited to get on with the rest of the agenda. So, Noah, on to you.
All right, uh, there we go. Uh, Chair Simon and uh, Planning Commission, thank you for the opportunity to present to you. Um, I am bringing a case that you saw previously in, in study session, as you may actually note by the incorrect date on the title slide of this uh, presentation. Um, this is a, the design review for Morrison Ranch Two. It's an apartment complex located at the southeast corner of uh, Beebe Street and Elliot Road. You'll see the site here. It's about sixteen acres, currently used for agricultural use on the very edge of the Morrison Ranch PAD area. Um, so it's uh, very much in, required to comply with the um, the, the surrounding environment of Morrison Ranch and fit into that. So skipping through that. Um, so uh, I want to just briefly introduce you to the uh, site plan here. Um, and just uh, provide you just some information about this project. Uh, there's two hundred and thirty-six units in this uh, in this site. Uh, kind of distributed in a way that creates kind of two rings of development and an outer ring. Uh, fronting the street onto uh, Beebe Street, uh, facing the neighborhood, and then um, the inner ring, which fronts an open space spine through the middle of the development. Um, there is, um, it's, it's really designed to complement the Morrison Ranch character area. Um, the frontage will look something similar to a neighboring development. I use this not as a um, prescriptive uh, exhibit to say this is exactly what it will look like, but it uses similar frontage treatments and it's meant to give you an idea of how these buildings along the edge of the str- uh, of the site on the west will front the street. Uh, you'll see that they uh, will use the Morrison Ranch split rail fence theming with the street trees and the uh, landscaping that's generally used throughout Morrison Ranch. Um, again, meant to create less of kind of an island of um, uh, of multifamily development and meant to kind of more seamlessly fit into uh, the neighborhood around it. So you can see that reflected on the landscape plan here. Uh, you have um, a mixture of eight, sixteen, two and four unit buildings, all kind of scattered throughout the site. Uh, predominantly eight-unit, two-story buildings, um, set within a pretty, pretty heavily landscaped environment. Again, really meant to complement the pretty mature landscaping that already exists within the Elliot Groves neighborhood that this would be located within. Grading and drainage, uh, just to give you a very quick note as this has come along and, and has been discussed by planning staff a little bit more in depth. Um, most of the site is internally, uh, will have drainage done internally. Um, in storage tanks under the open space spine and under the uh, western part of the development, and then there's two areas near Elliot Road and near Morrison Ranch Parkway, which will drain into existing retention basins and will fit within the existing designed capacities for both of those retention basins, so. Really just meant to demonstrate that this multifamily development is not exceeding the services that are already planned in that area uh, for development on this site. But uh, moving into um, the, the elevations here, uh, the elevations is where, where, this was where quite a bit of work was done on the um, uh, on, on design. Um, planning staff worked quite heavily with the architects to uh, make some adjustments based on Planning Commission or Design Review Board feedback. And so this, um, you'll see that um, there was more attention paid to the materials and the windows used on sides of the structures. And uh, again, really meant to maintain a kind of residential character. I'll keep moving through these, uh, since I know commission, they're uh, relatively familiar to you, but just identify some changes. Um, awnings and, and kind of sub roof lines were added on the prairie uh, units here. Uh, and then the rear elevations of the carriage houses were worked upon uh, quite a bit, in addition to some other minor changes with materials and the addition of windows and again, trying to promote a more residential character overall on all four sides of the building and the other buildings as well. So just a summary of some of the changes that were made there. The largest changes that, from the last time you saw this project were made to the clubhouse and the um, now accompanying fitness center building. Uh, there were comments that the, and planning staff uh, brought these forward. Uh, they felt that the clubhouse was uh, maybe lacking the same kind of residential character that other clubhouses and community buildings had in Morrison Ranch. So they started to move in that direction with a greater use of the board and bat and siding, more windows, and perhaps most interestingly, uh, the structure was broken into two pieces. There's a second structure that's now meant to have a barn theme with some barn doors, the kind of um, board and bat and siding. the kind of board and batten siding, the kind of theming elements that again take that fitness center that was once a part of that building on the left and now makes it its own distinctive theme element, which was worked on in conjunction with planning staff. The last item that is really significant that will change and will also inform a condition that's brought up here in a moment is just the Elliott Road improvements. There's required right turn lane and some other improvements that are required. But if we go back to the original vicinity map, you'll see that Elliott Road's half-street improvements do stop at the edge of this property on the east. And then obviously anything that's beyond that would be accomplished by a development that I know that we'll talk about quite a bit tonight later on in the hearing. And so there's just some additional traffic configurations that are required to meet the MUTCD standards that are for any community. Any municipality has to follow those, and then also Town of Gilbert standards for D cell lanes. And what we do when we have these temporary improvements that have to be done before the completion of a full right-of-way for an arterial. So in short, and not to take up too much more time, the planning staff recommends approval for DR 22-102, the sixteen point seven acre site for multifamily medium with the PAD overlay, subject to the following conditions. Just to briefly reintroduce the conditions to you about what you would need to change and what we're bringing forward to you. The site plan, there's one building, set of buildings that has an eighteen-foot separation and we require twenty-foot separation. So any, an updated site plan needs to be submitted that indicates that increase. The applicant has already acknowledged this and has agreed to, is, they're willing to make that correction. Just there's other boilerplate conditions, fire riser rooms in non-residential structures are required to have, be five foot by five foot per fire standard. And then the other primary condition that I wanted to focus on, and one that is a, something that we'll have to bring forward and at the hearing here and write up, and to be fair, it's a new process for me, is just that the required right-of-way improvements and traffic movement adjustments per MUTCD and Town of Gilbert standards on Elliott Road just have to be reflected on any drawings that are brought forward for building permitting and construction documents. Again, fairly standard comment, but one that needs to be added into this hearing as well. And then everything else is largely boilerplate language for multifamily and larger developments as well. So with that, I offer the opportunity for discussion. Thank you, commission.
Right, thank you, Noah. Questions or comments for Noah? Not hearing any. Is the applicant here and does the applicant have anything they'd like to say? Or should we go to neighbors and then you can come up? Not sure if, is the applicant here? Do we know?
Part of the applicant team is on the commission, so.
Okay.
I don't think, I don't think so. No, they haven't indicated that to me.
All right, perfect. Thank you. Well, with that, I have one comment that was submitted online for, and excuse me, I'm going to give one blanket statement tonight, so if I mess up your name, I apologize. I have a name that's not easy to say, so forgive me. But Amanda Abramovitz, I'm not sure if you're here, and I've got that you would like to comment. Is that correct? No? Okay. With that, I don't have anything else, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this point. Noah, thank you for your presentation. We'll bring it back up to the dais for discussion and/or emotion. All right, any discussion? And/or a motion?
Chairman, you ready for a motion?
Yeah, if there, yeah.
Chair, I would move to approve DR 22-102 Morrison Ranch Two, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Bianchi. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, I have a second. Commissioner Davis, we'll give you the second on that one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you very much. With that, we are going to go to the ranch. Obviously, we've got quite a list of people who are here to comment on that this evening. We're going to move through a presentation. Mr. Baugh, I see you in the back. Question for you quickly. Mr. Baugh. Do you want to give your presentation before or after public comment or questions? Or both? I will give you the chance to rebut. Okay, perfect. I just want to make sure that I move this along. So there are, obviously, we've got quite a few comment cards. I will also read into the record those comment cards of people who do not wish to speak. When I call you, I will actually call who is up, I'll call who's on deck, and then I'll call the third person on deck or in the hole, as we call it in baseball. So if you could make your way up to my left, your right side of the stadium, when I call upon you to come up, you'll have three minutes to speak. Please try to keep that succinct. If there is an individual who is here to speak for a group of you, please make that known at this time. And if you wish to appoint that person, and when I say a group, I'm talking five to ten people, we'll give that person a few extra minutes to present. With that being said. I'm sorry? Okay. Josh didn't come to present tonight.
No, Mr. Chairman, sorry. Josh is out sick, so I will be standing in his place today.
Okay, well, all right. Well, with that, we will go ahead and presentation on the ranch whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. The case before you here is GP. Thank you. Can you hear me now?
They're louder.
The case before you tonight is GP 2205 and Z 2205, called The Ranch. The site is approximately three hundred and two acres and it's located between Elliott Road and Warner Road, adjacent to the west side of Power Road. Just as a little bit of explanation, the major general plan amendment, the Gilbert 2020 general plan defines a major general plan amendment as any change to a non-residential land use classification of forty acres or more. So the process for a major general plan amendment includes a sixty-day agency review, two required Planning Commission public hearings. The first will be tonight, the next will be the twentieth, and then town council action required by the end of the calendar year. So to provide a little bit of context of the proposal in relation to the area, again, we've got, the property is bounded on the north by Elliott Road, Power Road to the west, Warner Road to the south, and Morrison Ranch to the west. The property itself is currently zoned, has a combination of zonings on it. It is light industrial, general commercial, and business park. So the property is also identified in the general plan as being a part of the Power Road growth corridor. This area is identified as a prime area for significant employment uses due to its access to the larger Phoenix metro area via the Santan freeway, as well as nationwide access provided by its proximity to the Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport. The site is also located within the vertical overlay, vertical development overlay district, specifically within Area Two. This does allow for some bonus height within, along the eastern half of the property. Within Area Two, heights up to sixty feet for general commercial and business park zoning districts, and up to seventy-five feet for regional commercial and office uses. So there are some recent development projects in the vicinity of this property. One is Power Commerce Phase One. That is actually a little bit to the north of this site. It's a hundred and fifty thousand square feet of small-scale industrial, and it's currently under construction. Just to the south of that is Phase Two of Power Commerce. It's also a small-scale industrial project, and that's actually in for pre-application review right now. Just to the south of that is a Fry's Grocery Store. It's about a hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet. It includes a fueling facility, a seventeen thousand square foot commercial pad, or seventeen thousand square feet of commercial pads, and another seventeen thousand square feet of inline shops. That particular project you'll also see on the agenda tonight as well. Morrison Ranch Two, which you just heard, is to the, adjacent to the northwest corner of the property. And that'll be for approximately two hundred and thirty-six multifamily units. Warner Meadows, adjacent to the northwest corner of the site, is a residential development currently under construction. Warner Commons, a four hundred thousand square foot employment industrial development adjacent to the southwest corner of the site. Keystone, which is a residential development, it is a mixture of bungalow and townhome products. And then to the south, there are two industrial projects called Hopewell. There's Phase One and Phase Two. The applicant's request is to change the existing general plan land use classifications from industrial, general office, and general, I'm sorry, business park, and general, I'm sorry, let me start over again. To change the existing general plan land use classifications from industrial, general office and general commercial to industrial and general commercial with accompanying rezoning. So the proposed conceptual site plan includes approximately three hundred and two acres of largely employment industrial uses with some commercial and retail at the Power and Warner and Power and Elliott corners. The proposed conceptual landscape plan for the development incorporates things such as the Morrison Ranch streetscape. It includes approximately twenty-two percent of the site will be landscaped, which onsite is going to be about two point six million square feet. Included in the landscape proposal is a landscape buffer along the western edge of the site that is approximately eighty feet wide. It varies in width as it goes north to south, but it's about eighty feet wide. And it includes a double row of trees and a trail that ties into the Morrison Ranch Trail. The rezoning request includes a planned area development or PAD overlay. The applicant has requested just one deviation as part of the PAD. That deviation is to increase the maximum height for accessory structures only from fifty-five feet to sixty-five feet. What you're looking at on the slide here is purely for illustrative purposes only. This is not from this particular development proposal. It is merely to demonstrate a sample of what an accessory structure could be. I'd also like to take this opportunity to correct an error in the staff report. The two thousand nine zoning case that established the Morrison Ranch Business Center PAD approved building heights up to seventy-five feet for portions of the business park and general commercial zoning districts that are generally located along the eastern half of the property, rather than just within the GC zoning district as indicated in the staff report. Regarding the other development standards applied to this site, the proposal does include standards that exceed town minimum requirements, such as increased setbacks for both the main buildings and the accessory structures. Minimum requirement to seventy-five feet, a minimum of two hundred feet is being provided. Increased landscape setbacks along the west side from thirty feet to sixty feet. And an increase in the net landscaping onsite, as I had mentioned before, is up to twenty-two percent. There's been a, some neighborhood meetings held in regards to this project. The first neighborhood meeting was held in March and it was a virtual meeting. There are about seven property owners who attended that meeting. A follow-up neighborhood meeting, virtual again, was held on September first. And approximately a hundred and thirty property owners attended that one. There was more recently an in-person meeting that was held last week and about ninety-seven property owners and surrounding neighbors and interested parties were in attendance. Generally, the feedback received at these meetings were concerns about the building height, transition to the residential adjacent to the west, the land use not in, not in conformance with the Morrison Ranch vision, noise and truck traffic. In addition to that, staff has received emails regarding this project. The general theme of the emails that we have received pertain to the concerns for the intensity of the development for location, not meeting the intent of the general plan for Morrison Ranch, the size of the buildings in relation to the adjacent neighborhood. Some requested keeping the existing zoning, and again, concerns with truck traffic. So the next steps in the major general plan process include a second hearing, which will be October twentieth, and that will be held at the Southeast Regional Library. It is anticipated that we will be going to the town council for their consideration and action on November fifteenth, and a design review public hearing, which will be determined at some point in the future. That concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, thank you. And I just want to clarify that we are not taking action this evening. We're just here to hear the propose.
Chairman, that's correct. You will not take action at this particular hearing. The point of this hearing is, you know, to satisfy the two required hearings per state statute and to also receive public input.
Okay, all right. With that, do we have any questions or comments? Yeah, Commissioner Bianchi.
I guess I have one question. Thank you, Chair. Ms. Gonzalez, this might actually be a question for our attorney for council as well. I was noticing the staff report in the neighborhood meeting minutes that it says that state statute can't stipulate uses through PAD, but the applicant can stipulate or prohibit uses as part of a PAD. Is that correct? Meaning if the applicant chose to remove certain uses, they could do that rather than us?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Bianchi, it is correct that you cannot limit uses through a PAD rezoning. If the property owner through deed restrictions, CCNRs, through that type of mechanism, they could limit it through that method.
That, I think that sounds right, but we as a commission couldn't dictate.
Could not prohibit uses, correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure the way it was stated in the state statute, I understood that. Thank you.
Right, any other questions for Veronica? No? Would the applicant like to make a presentation at this time? Mr. Baugh, come on down.
Good evening, Adam Baugh, twenty-five, twenty-five East Arizona, Biltmore Circle. This is a unique position for me. I present in front of this committee regularly, in front of committees across the valley in virtually every jurisdiction. This might be the first time where I've been able to represent a case in the very community where I live, particularly in the neighborhoods and the homes I've lived in for seventeen, eighteen years. And I not only hear as an applicant, or even as a neighbor, I think I'm here maybe as the text message I got, which is public enemy number one. And so it's probably deserved, and I think it's probably unjust, but maybe a little bit of truth to that, too. When I think about when I started working on this case in June of last year, I remember the opportunity came to me. I was excited about it. Somebody who lives in this area and drives to Phoenix every day, know what it's like to make that long commute for employment. I could see the value of a project like this. Having worked in land use and zoning since two thousand and six and done many of these projects all across Arizona, and seeing the value that they provide for cities and towns and communities, there is tremendous benefit to them. So when I thought about the opportunity of representing this one here, I was excited because I knew it was going to be not only close to my home, but an opportunity to create new industries, new opportunities, new jobs, new revenues, new infrastructure, and finally a chance to get through the light at Power and Elliott a little faster once somebody puts in the roadwork to complete it. So selfishly, it seemed like a great idea. And I think as I learned over the last, really thirty days, that I might be alone in that opinion. And that's fine. I still believe in the merits of the land use case. What I want to be able to do is walk you through why we believe the request is proper and appropriate, some things that we've been doing and some things I think will be headed to. I think about what you do as a planning commission. You hear cases day in and day out. You evaluate them based on their history, what they're located next to, what their general plan might be, what their proximity is to other light county uses, other freeway corridors. And as you weigh and evaluate the balance of the And as you weigh and evaluate the balance of these sites' conditions, you make a determination. Sometimes they're easy and sometimes they're hard and sometimes they're with a group of people who are opposed to it and sometimes there's nobody there. But I think as a commission, you look at these decisions based on what's the best interest of the town, townwide. And I hope you might consider that lens as you evaluate this. Some things that are interesting about this case today, you're probably going to hear a lot about general plan changes in character areas and growth areas. You're going to hear about dock doors and building heights. You'll hear about battery plants and buffers and children's safety. You heard about traffics and trips and among many other things. And my goal is to help convey what we're proposing to do and maybe answer many questions and also at the end, hopefully receive some instruction and direction from you. Because this is an information hearing today and the actual vote is on the 20th, if there's particular instruction that, that we need to hear, we are willing to receive that today. Maybe to take a little step back though, it's important to maybe set forth the tone of what, what is a general plan? You, you see this regularly. The town voted on this. The council put it, voted on it. And so the question I keep hearing is why are you changing something that we just voted on? And it's a fair question. And I think what I'll do as I go through my presentation is walk you through why this makes good sense and why we think it's worth a change. But it's worth noting that the general plan is not an ordinance. The general plan is a policy document. It guides developments, it sets goals and policies, but it also recognizes that on occasion it has to change. And there's an amendment process built into the general plan precisely because as land uses change, as a city grows, as different circumstances become apparent, even the best intentioned plan still must adapt over time. And that's why this month, there's a number of cases on your agenda that are changing the general plan. And the next Wednesday of next month, there'll be more cases, about half a dozen cases every first Wednesday of the month, there's a change to the general plan, even though it's been voted on and evaluated. It still adapts to what are changing circumstances and good wise land use decisions. So as you think about where, where this is going, you're probably going to look at what the surrounding zoning might be. You might look at a number of factors, but I wanted to at least show you why we believe this proposal warrants a general plan amendment. So with that being said, let me walk you through what we're proposing to do today. Our proposal includes about 17 buildings and industrial buildings plus two retail corners. The retail corners will equal about 19 or so acres over the entire 311 acres. Our buildings are about 200 feet or so from the nearest residential zoning boundary line. Our building heights are between 42 to 55 feet. If you add a parapet, it's a few feet more. We have a request and I think this created a lot of consternation because our initial zoning filing included a request for 65-foot tall heights. It wasn't our intention to have 65-foot tall buildings, but we want to have the ability to have material silos or satellite equipment on top. And those generally have to be roof mounted and so that's why we asked for the 65 feet. To be clear, and hopefully I can repeat this many times, our building heights are between 42 to 55 feet. The other thing we've since added, from the time we initially filed application to where we are now, is that if there is any accessory structure that's to reach above the height of the building, that those accessory structures must be at least 600 feet away from the western property line. And the reason why that matters is because it's clearly a point of contention and to the, the point that the ability to move it further west, excuse me, further east helps, I think, address some of that concern. Our buildings are ranging between 70,000 to about 600,000 square feet. And our commercial corners conclude everything from retail uses, restaurants, fitness uses, dining, et cetera. If we could find a, a secondary grocer, we would be delighted. If we could find a hotel that was interested in it, we would be thrilled. And truth matters, we think, we think there's a strong need for some commercial corner with the right size of land, probably proximate to the intersections, which is what we've done today. So why would I change the general plan? Well, this isn't my plan. My job as the applicant is to represent somebody who has a proposal and to go through the process. But as we evaluated their proposal and why they're looking to do what they do, I think it's important to understand why is this zoning today so challenging? It's a really, really odd pattern. And so when you look at this zone, you have to understand its genesis. When it was zoned in 2009, it went from industrial with some golf course uses to what you see today. And in 2009, they put three categories on here. They put business park, they put light industrial, and they put general commercial. And general commercial was the greater amount of acreage for the site. Well, maybe general commercial on BP equally, but those two uses were probably the key focus of it as well as some industrious as well. There was no development plan at the time. This was a concept exhibit. And I think it was to generate an improved entitlement, to put it into a better position to be marketed and maybe even a better position to be sold and possibly in a better position to create more value. I wasn't a part of that case. I don't know particularly all the reasons. I can just only go back and look at the meeting minutes. But what was interesting about that case, that they put 75-foot tall building heights on about, I'm approximately guessing about 75% of the property. Everything that's essentially GC with the exception of a little bit on the, in western boundary and a lot of the BP along Power Road. And so it was interesting, I think the idea was to create more intensity, which could create more jobs, more shopping, more trips, more traffic. And you can only achieve that with the type of intensity that they're, and height and intensity they're asking for. But because that idea was purely conceptual, 13 years have gone by without a single user coming forward to develop that big project. And interestingly, those type, that type of acre with 101 acres of commercial, isn't your local coffee shop and dry cleaner. That is more of a large anchored power retail center. The kind of things that you see just south of 202 right now at the Target anchored shopping center and the Walmart anchored shopping center, or even the gallery that's being planned in Mesa just south of the 202 freeway. And, and I think the reason is you can only put too many power centers in one area before they start to cannibalize each other. And you can only really build retail when you have good, good credit tenants that are willing to anchor it and be kind of the key major anchor that the rest are willing to fall along. And when you have those key major anchors already nearby within a quarter mile, you can zone the whole site, 300 acres, and you still won't be able to manifest and compete with what's built in the marketplace today. And so for that reason, I believe that it's been 13 years of vacant land. And so you have to ask yourself, well, it's vacant land, what, what do you do? What are your options? Well, and I, and I think I probably skipped a little too fast, but this exhibit helps you show where the building heights are allowed on the property today. If blue is 75, green is 45, yellow is 55, and if it's not colored, then it's 35. And these are the heights that are presently permitted. And so this is the framework in which my client is looking at the property. He doesn't own the property. He's looking to purchase the property. That closing will occur if the zoning is approved. And so in this framework, he looks at this and goes, hmm, can I build this much commercial? Can I build this much business park? Is there a demand for business park at 60 feet tall? Is there a demand for commercial? And he starts to figure out what is in the marketplace? What is the demand? And what are my constraints on the property today? And as he starts to evaluate those things, he comes up with a land plan. And he goes, hmm, this property has some really odd zoning. Commercial areas are better located at intersections than the middle, than mid-block. Old zoning really didn't take into consideration the way that the McD, and the city of Mesa control the access points along Power Road or what the access points are predetermined along Elliott and Warner. And so he starts to really struggle to figure out, how do I make this pattern, which is just very odd and probably unreplicable anywhere else, work? And frankly, it came as an applicant himself that this plan doesn't work. Maybe somebody else might. I would love to see the data that happens. But I believe that in his mind and what he develops, this plan is not viable. But this plan does have some industrial and this plan does have some commercial. And while we don't have the faith in business park in this area, we think we can come up with something that's a little bit better. And so we looked at similar options and it didn't take long to realize that they aren't really viable. 101 acres of retail, I think already covered that, not really viable. Can I do homes here? Well, you're in the airport flight path and maybe that's changed a little bit over time, but I think it's pretty consistent that homes aren't expected, allowed, encouraged anywhere on this property. Could you build 300 acres of business park on this with 60-foot tall buildings? I guess you have the entitlements for it, but I don't think that would be a wise decision. And I don't know anybody that would really take the courage to develop spec buildings like that, particularly when you have a 300-acre Rivlon business park that is moving at a very deliberate pace with a time since 2007. So if Rivlon, as big as it is, equal to this size, is going at a very casual pace, it tells you that business park here is even less likely to succeed when you want to be in synergism with the others. And then I think you look at, well, is there a need for maybe a, a different public facility that town has, maybe a park? Well, town has the big Cactus Yards facility right next door and plus their parks master plan and has parks located on their spots. So when you consider what are your other options, there aren't a lot of other particularly great options that can work with this type of configuration or even something different. And so you start to look back, well, what was the prior zoning before? The prior zoning was industrial. The prior zoning also included golf course amenities. And that prior zoning was likely reflected because the general plan in the 1990s was for industrial uses. Why would the town have a general plan for industrial uses on this property? They already had an industrial corridor on their west side, but they wanted to create an employment hub in an industrial corridor on its east side, recognizing where the 60 freeway is, where the 202 alignment would eventually come in, how Power Road at the time and today still is considered a road of regional significance. Putting industrial on this part of town near an airport makes perfect sense then, and we think it makes good sense today, but clearly I might be the only person in this room that would say that. And so when you look at what that plan was, I think the town was very intentional about trying to create that secondary hub. And when you have 300 contiguous acres, you can plan for a little bit of a modern type of industrial user. Another reason why I think, we believe it makes good sense to change the general plan is because there's significant economic opportunity, which is why I was so excited when I was contacted to represent this last year. Because I, I've lived in this town since 03. I, I volunteer in this town, I serve in this town. Like to me, the opportunity to create jobs where people don't have to travel, they can work in their own town to create economic investment, infrastructure, those are the things that build communities. And so I'm, I was, I was thrilled about it. And when I looked at the general plan, here are just some of the key goals and policies that are outlined in the general plan of why this makes good sense. You know, providing and supporting business creation, innovation, entrepreneur, reserving and providing sites for employment and economic development, growing the town's fiscal health, creating and expanding areas for manufacturing, distribution, product, services, and ideas. Now, the general plan is a, is a document full of many policies and objectives and you can probably find policies in there that work against me. That's the point of the general plan. It's not meant to be perfect. It's not meant to be absolute. It's meant to evolve and adapt as conditions warrant. And so what we're proposing and why we think this makes good sense is because of these goals that are highlighted here with this economic opportunity. It will create significant jobs, jobs that actually work in our town. We don't even have enough jobs available in our town today for the available workforce resident that lives in the town. So something like this really can make a significant difference. There's a 1.4% vacancy of industrial leasing opportunity in the town. That tells you you have a significant demand problem and a significant undersupply problem. We want to be able to create 300 acres that creates new industries, industries that evolved since the town created the general plan. No one was talking about electric vehicles in 1990. No one was talking about semiconductor industry leaving Taiwan and coming here. No one was talking about bringing manufacturing back to America after being gone for so long. But all these are the things that necessitate reimagining this property and why you'd want to have and enjoy the benefit of 300 contiguous acres that you don't get or exist anywhere else in this town. And then clearly, I think the opportunity to create new revenues, even on the 19 acres, is a, is a benefit to the town. Another reason why you'd consider many of the general plan is because this is what the Power Road growth corridor calls for. It calls for a little bit of commercial, a little bit of business park, a little bit of industrial because it's in a quick transportation access area, because it is a catalyst for development. These are the things that are expected to occur in this area. Perhaps maybe for some in a different configuration, for us, we think it makes good land use sense. But when I consider on a big picture and set aside my, who I am as a neighbor, but looking at who I am as a resident of the town and more probably as an applicant in many cases all across the valley, this type of a project just makes good land use sense when we consider what the town wants, what the town desires, what the town's always expected and why the 2009 plan was probably a creative effort, but nothing worth creating an interest in it. This is what's happening in the corridor right now. These are the users that are up and down Power Road that either have sites that are built, that have sites under contract, that have sites that have been permitted. You can see that this is an intensive corridor with a lot of vehicles, traffic, heights, but mainly a lot of industrial uses. Veronica showed a slide, I think I'll, I'll add a little bit more to it. Everything in gray is zoned and planned for industrial. The stuff directly across the street from us, industrial. North of the Elliott Road, there's some commercial at the intersection, but industrial behind it. South of Warner Road, more industrial. So why would there be so much industrial in this area here? And I think that's the question that you got to ask stuff and some of that's, a lot of that's in Mesa, but even Gilbert has a clear desire and a demand to provide something that's needed in the marketplace. And the opportunity to create that along Power Road, one of the most important key corridors in this area, three miles south of the 202, excuse me, south of 60, quarter mile north of 202, three miles west of the other 202, there's very few properties that have that kind of freeway access of this size that can create the kind of vision that economic development apartments dream about. So another reason why we think it makes good sense to change our plan is because it, we believe it has a reduction in the impacts related to heights, setbacks, and trips. Here are the heights. In 2008, the town adopted the vertical height overlay. Half of this property at that moment became permitted for 60-foot tall buildings on the eastern half. And then in 2009, you saw the exhibit already that shows up, the 95 feet and 45 feet different spots. And so we believe that we do have taller buildings, right? Our buildings are 42 to 55 feet. Our commercial buildings will certainly be much, much lower. But even at 42 and 55, we're still equal to, less than, the heights are allowed except for the part, some, some of the parts that are still 35 today. This exhibit, I think, really does a good job of indicating clearly where those heights are allowed on the property today. I admit, we cannot have in the areas that are not colored, buildings taller than 35 feet. And I think that is a, a, one of the big items of discussion that we've heard in the feedback going forward. But at least you can kind of see what is the mix of the property today, where those heights are permitted and why we think that even at our proposal, we're probably a little bit better as far as heights go than what could otherwise be developed today. It's also worth noting that we think we have better building setbacks. If you were to evaluate what the current zoning is next to the neighbors there, BP, GC, NLI, and what those setbacks are permitted at, I could have a BP building at 25 feet right now. And what we're proposing is bring buildings that are between 212 to 265 feet from that property line. And that plan, that, that layout was created long before we had the most recent neighbor meetings, but that was in, an action that the designer took in recognition of the residential proximity nearby. Another thing we believe was we're going to be substantially less vehicle trips than what can be built with a present zoning today. And as you know, traffic engineers use the International Traffic Engineer Manual. And those manuals have uses that are modeled based on decades and years of experience and so they're generally pretty reliable. But at this point, there are also still estimations, but very reasonable and reliable estimations. And we believe based on the, the intensity of what we're proposing, our specific plan, it will create about 25,000 trips average daily. As opposed to what the current zoning could allow, up to 45,000 trips. And that's just really a function of 101 acres of commercial and then the percentage of acres of business park and the percentage of acres of, of light industrial. And so these are essentially estimations, but prepared with the scientific experience of a traffic engineer who puts that together. But at the end of the day, about almost 20,000 trips less, we estimate than what could otherwise be built on the property today. And I think that's a really important factor because a lot of people don't necessarily realize how much commercial activity creates trips on a scale relative to other uses. Just on our property alone, we're only 19 acres of commercial. Those 19 acres create 55% of our overall trips. It's because commercial just by nature has a lot more turnover. And so it's easy to understand from my perspective why we're half, almost half the trips than what could be built otherwise today. So I, I think I'll be considerate of, I know you have a, a long meeting today, you have a lot of folks that will like to speak. I want to kind of wrap up with some comments here and then certainly I'll have some more information to share on rebuttal if necessary. But when I look and weigh the balance of the project benefits, I completely understand the sentiment that's been shared by the folks who live nearby. Some of them I know from coaching kids in Little League, some I know from church, some I know because our kids go to the same school, some of them are friends with my own children. So when I present a case like this, it's a little bit different for me than I would in any other occasion. So when I hear the comments that, that are shared, I take them a little closer to heart than I would in another circumstance because I understand the, I understand the emotion that's behind it. I understand the concern behind it. I understand, I think, the reaction to it. And while I do this day in and day out all across the valley, for many people, this is the first time they've had a zoning experience, the first time they've ever understood or heard about a general plan or zoning map. But when I evaluate, when I evaluate this case, I think the benefits, two commercial shopping centers that are probably better sized for this property than the 101 that was planned before. Creating a signature employment hub on 300 contiguous acres is, is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for most cities. But the ability to create new jobs and industries and revenues and businesses and infrastructure on one singular. But the ability to create new jobs and industries and revenues and businesses and infrastructure on one singular development is huge. I think that's why the Power Road Growth Corridor has recommended these types of uses. I think that's why the general plan in the past recommended these types of uses. We believe it's consistent with the commercial industrial activity along this road already. And the ability to be by, within a quarter mile to three miles of three different freeway access points is special, that you don't get anywhere else. And that's why the intensity that we're asking for today is different than any other particular general plan case. That's why the general plan amendment is necessary. And that's why we're asking for something that you don't hear very often, but we think makes good land use sense, good business sense for the town. I can talk about the other things, but at the end of the day, I think, I think we feel like the other uses that are on the property today and the options that you would consider just don't work. And so if not that, then what else? But I know, frankly, I think I still have some work to do. And that's, I think, the benefit of the process. The amount of emails I received, good and bad, the ones I've shed, been a little embarrassed to share with people. But I also appreciate what they do, because they tell me that, one, I think, we need at different points to take a closer look at our plan at different spots. But we do believe in the merits of the plan, we think it makes good sense, we think the town would enjoy the benefit of this project like that. And so for that reason, I present this to you today. I know you have a significant number of cards, and so I'll certainly love to just take some notes at the back and then provide some comments on the backside if necessary.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments for Mr. Baugh at this point? Mr. Commissioner Johnson?
Maybe this should be deferred for the council, but one of the underpinnings of your presentation is economics. Does this town of Gilbert need to achieve job-resident parity, especially given the economic sub-area, I mean, the economic subzone of the entire East Valley? And maybe this question is not appropriate for this meeting. I'm anxious to hear the community, but I wonder about those economic underpinnings for this proposed plan.
And I think Jennifer Graves from the Economic Development Department is probably better able to address that to me, but she's here.
Thank you.
Jennifer, do you want to address that at this point, just real quick?
Shorter than Adam as well. So Commissioner Johnson, Chair Simon, you asked about economic parity with residents and a number of jobs. And so what Adam had put up on the screen was a statistic that talks about how many jobs are in the community for the labor force. And we look at that as, we try to close that gap, and we are focused on economic benefits for the community that focus on STEM and STEM-related jobs. And one of the missions of the Office of Economic Development and of the town, at the direction, of course, of our city manager, is to try to close that gap and create more jobs that match, Gilbert probably won't ever become a net importer of labor, where we have more jobs than labor force in our community. But we are trying to achieve a vision and a goal in our community from an economic perspective of closing that gap, creating more jobs in the community for our residents, to have work, be able to work closer to home. And we believe that that does create a better quality of life, allows more people to have, like I said, jobs closer to their residence. Hopefully that answered your question.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Excellent, thank you. Any other questions or comments for the applicant at this point? All right, not hearing any. We will go to public comment. First, I'm going to start off by reading into record those notifications that were received online, and then also comment cards of those that do not wish to speak. I will do my best to read the name and the comment, and then we will provide those to staff so that they can actually get them hopefully more accurate than I probably will read them into record. So first and foremost, I've got those who've signed petition or signed online in opposition to the proposed. And that is Greg Patrick opposed, Debbie Patrick opposed, Chris Cox opposed, Stephanie Cox opposed, Craig Addington opposed, Murphy Addington opposed, Josh Castro opposed, Noel Castro opposed, Brad Smith opposed, Morgan Smith opposed, Matthew Ekman opposed, Amanda Ekman opposed, Tim and Teresa Wallace opposed, Carol Ann Haslam opposed, Brian Mosley opposed, Kyle Graff opposed, CJ Cotrell opposed, Olivia Abramovitz opposed, Nellie Moller opposed. I feel like the harder I try, the worse it gets, so I apologize. Michael Abramovitz opposed, Amanda Abramovitz opposed, Shannon Mosley opposed, and then Ryan Handelsman opposed. That is all of those that we received from online opposition. I'll now read comment cards that, into the record, that are those opposed. So I've got, and forgive me, I'm looking at handwriting too, so. Brittany Yonkin is opposed, this proposal contradicts everything that the general plan goals and policies state. Keely Fautier, looks like, is opposed. Opposed to change in planning to ninety percent light industrial use is unacceptable. Daniel Straza is opposed, does not wish to speak. Debbie Patrick is opposed, this is in conflict with the general plan ratified in 2020, and is opposed. Tom Arcid, Arkidit, is opposed, and I apologize for mispronouncing your name. We've got Tim Wallace is opposed, does not fit or over all neighborhood zoning. Jennifer Wada, or Woda, is opposed, does not wish to speak. The ranch does not fit into the character and community of Morrison Ranch and is a blatant disregard of the ratified general plan. Roy Haney is opposed, does not wish to speak, we don't want industrial of this size and height next to us. Christina Haney is opposed and does not wish to speak. Steve Palmeroy is opposed, does not wish to speak. Tim Everett is opposed, does not wish to speak, I'm opposed to the ranch project on Elliott, or power in Elliott. Ross Chambers is opposed, does not wish to speak. Lauren Layer is opposed. Michael Layer is opposed, I oppose the ranch, it is in opposition to Gilbert general plan. Michael Barnhart is opposed, opposed as it goes against the general plan and character of Morrison Ranch. Lynn Hippenhammer is opposed, and this project does not fit in with the character of the area in any way. Terry Hippenhammer, or Hippenhammer, is opposed. And Corey Hayes, I believe, is, it doesn't say opposed or for, but does not wish to speak. I'm assuming opposed, not sure. So we've got those, those are the comment cards of the people that were submitted but did not wish to speak. All right, now we'll go to those who do wish to speak. Please remember, you do have three minutes. You're going to step up to the podium, I will call your name, I'll call on deck, and I'll call in the hole. If you could line up against the wall to my left, I was trying to think of the direction, I don't know what direction that is. And then we'll go from there. So Daniel Petten, you will be up first. Karen Arnt, you'll be up second, and then Sarah Straza, you will be up third. So if you could make your way down to the podium, you do have three minutes, we do have a timer. And I will be asking you to wrap up at the time that that does expire, so. Daniel, you're up first, please state your name.
I live off a speech. Somebody I associate with the ranch project. So as we're talking about this project, we're referencing back to zoning ordinance back from nineteen ninety-eight, where we say in industrial use, though, we've been contemplating this area. And when we look at that ordinance, this is from ordinance eleven twenty-nine, we can see that the industrial use is meaningfully insulated from the residential use with a hundred and forty-five acre golf course. When we look at this ordinance, we can see Morrison Ranch Parkway carries through, Bloomfield carries through. It creates this interconnected community that's essential to our general plan. And then if we look at the, I guess, far east side of the property here, this is an entertainment and recreation corridor. The way this is described in roaming ordinance eleven twenty-nine is that this is prime custom sites with a golf course resort convention facility unmatched in the southeast valley. It also gives uses for that E and R parcels, this blue section right here, carry out food service, convenience, retail, hotels, hotels, resorts, outdoor restaurants.
For that zoning. And then when we look, the power technology zoning objective is to create an eighteen-hole golf course resort convention amenity package, which will attract commercial and industrial uses to power technology center. So we see this meaningful kind of insulating factor from industrial, from our homes. And everywhere else you look in Gilbert, if you go down to the industrial corridor off a baseline between Cooper and Arizona Avenue, you've got Cocapella Golf Course right there, insulating those homes from albeit much smaller industrial uses. And then we move to two thousand and nine, where this zoning has changed. And we could see, I've kind of given a little bit different colored perspective, so we could see the heights of the buildings. For scale, this is six hundred and fifty-three feet away from the road alignment. So when we look, we're talking seventy-five feet with meaningful breaks. One commonality between nineteen ninety-eight and two thousand and nine is this meaningful interconnected community. So we're bringing Morrison Ranch Parkway through, Bloomfield Parkway through, and when Business Center Drive is added, you can see the breaks in the land. So we're not creating monolithic concrete structures that potentially span five football fields. We're seeing this kind of meaningful development. And again, central theme, you've got light industrial insulated by the Morrison Ranch Phase Two apartments that were discussed earlier tonight. And as you move south, you've got the Warner Commons area insulating the other industrial use. So we talk about a general plan being something that changes, voters ratify it, voters look at ordinances, people rely on this information when they make decisions. Just, you know, three years ago, GP eighteen oh nine, which is Recker and Warner, this attorney argued that it was incompatible with the adjacent residential uses. So we rezoned ninety acres of light industrial like two, three years ago because there's no demand for it. And now, all of a sudden, there's all this demand. There's a reason you don't see four million square feet of industrial uses next to a residential community, it's because it doesn't make sense.
Okay, thank you. That's Daniel, Daniel Petten, is that what your name?
I'm Peyton.
Peyton, thank you. Karen Arnt, you're up next, and then we've got Sarah Straza, and then Jackie Cotrell.
Hi, my name is Karen Arnt, and I live in Morrison Ranch, Elliott Grove. And I'm speaking about the goals and policies that relate to the two twenty twenty general plan, specifically community goal. One, encourage a balanced land use framework. Goal one, description, one of the main reasons for Gilbert's continued prosperity is due to the town's history being a well-planned community with high-quality development. As Gilbert's growth continues, we must effectively utilize our land supply and manage our development patterns while maintaining our community character. Policy one, ensure the town maintains a land use framework that supports a highly livable community through the efficient use of land and resources. Does this project make our community more livable? Eighteen thousand three hundred new external daily trips in the preliminary traffic study and DF traffic ratings is not more livable. Cross dock traffic is significantly more intense and different than cars pulling in and out of the area. What aspect of the ninety-two percent industrial use can the people in this area utilize that make it highly livable? The point is that the proposed amendment obliterates the aspects that make a community more livable. Policy two, encourage high-quality housing in suitable areas that accommodate a variety of lifestyles, households, ages, market preferences, and incomes. The current zoning could potentially be a mixed-use development that would offer high-quality housing for all income levels and ages. That type of development will be tied in with Morrison Ranch, where various ages and income levels already reside. The applicant alleges this is the crash zone of the airport. Other developments in direct flight paths, Haas Crossing have been approved for housing uses and parts of this land which facilitate that use. Mixed use could mean many things. It could be in hotel with rest, retail and restaurants, office space with retail below. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Sarah Straza, Jackie Cotrell, and then Jenny Everett.
Hello, Chair, Commission. My name's Sarah Straza, and I live in Morrison Ranch. I'm speaking about the goals and policies that relate to the twenty twenty general plan, specifically community goal number one, encouraging a balanced land use framework. Policy number three, supports placement of compatible commercial uses and community services that integrate access to daily needs into residential neighborhoods. The proposed development utterly obliterates the commercial use and community services aspect by rezoning the land from a predominantly commercial and business park use to ninety-two percent industrial use. The proposed amendment does not integrate access to daily needs into the residential neighborhoods. Most of this development will never be patroned by surrounding residents. We need restaurants in this area, we need doctors' offices, we need dentists, we need business park uses. We need things that drive consumer spending and increase the propensity to open up small businesses, enhancing Gilbert's sale tax base. Policy number four is promoting mixed-use development within appropriate use land classifications. This is supported by the current zoning in place. The amendment does the exact opposite of this. The proposed amendment seeks to destroy the potential of these mixed uses. Policy number five is to guide a greater diversity of housing types, densities, retail and commercial centers, and employment opportunities into identified growth areas where significant change is foreseeable. There is arguably no meaningful retail or commercial centers within this development, and there's no opportunity for loft-style housing. The current zoning is identified in ordinance twenty-two nineteen, and it meets policy five almost to the point of perfection. The job creation from this amendment is a guess. If you drive down Ray, many of those buildings are occupied with almost no employment. While there is potential to draw employment, it's currently unknown. And policy six, support the provision of an appropriate transition between sites having distinct changes in types or intensities of land uses. This project, again, obliterates a defined character area that's adjacent to a residential neighborhood. There is, again, arguably no transition whatsoever in this applicant's proposal. They moved from residential to five hundred thousand square feet of industrial warehousing. Other industrial uses in Gilbert have appropriate transitions when more density construction, constructed residential areas is adjacent, like the Cocapella Golf Course is an example. And just a side note, as Adam had said, he said that this land had been vacant for thirteen years, and it wasn't because of zoning. It's because we've been developing over these last thirteen years, and now it's a more desirable area. We foresee the zoning being used that's currently there for a lot of great different uses. And if we destroy that and rezone it, we crush a potential to have a really great area developed. Thank you so much for your time, and I really appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. I think you set the bar high with hitting right at three minutes. Thank you. Jackie Cotrell, Jenny Everett, and then Barbara Lucha.
Hi, my name is Jackie Cotrell, and I live in the Morrison Ranch Elliott Grove neighborhood, and my house is just three houses away from this field. I'm speaking about the goals and policies that relate to the twenty twenty general plan, specifically for community goal number two, which is focus on quality development. It states Gilbert's identity or sense of place is significantly shaped by the physical form, design, and architectural style of the town's built environment. Residents care about this identity and want to live somewhere that they can take pride in calling home. The town also wants to make a positive impression with visitors, creating interesting places that people remember and want to revisit. In the future, Gilbert will continue to be a vibrant community for residents and visitors by advancing the town's desire for high-quality development and redevelopment. So policy seven of that, it says preserve and maintain Gilbert's attractive appearance and quality of development that provide a sense of place. And with this proposed amendment, I feel does not provide a sense of place. I feel like this is completely out of place for this location. We have Mission Church and Cactus Yards just north, and a high school there, and a fries, the fries that's going in. And to the east, you have another school and a swim school and some business park areas there. And then along the east now with Warner Meadows, almost the entire east side of this is residential homes. Policy eight, it says proactively improve the public realm to support a pedestrian-friendly, high-quality, and distinctive-built environment. And that, I do not feel like does this at all. This is no place that pedestrians would be able to enjoy or walk around. There would be no need for pedestrians to go walk around giant warehouse buildings. With the land being currently zoned for about fifteen to seventeen percent of light industrial, and then this plan putting that almost, I think, to ninety-two percent of light industrial on this whole area is just not compatible with what's on this whole area is just not compatible with what surrounds this area, especially the homes that are right next to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jenny Everett, Barbara Lucia, I'm sorry if I mispronounce your names, and then Patty Palmeroy.
I am Jenny Everett. I live in Elliott Groves in Morrison Ranch. I'm speaking about the goals and policies that relate to the general two thousand twenty general plan, specifically Community Goal to focus on quality development. Policy nine, in the areas of town that have a consistent design character, encourage the design of new development to maintain and support the existing character. The proposed amendment seeks to literally rezone a defined character area. The area is part of a master plan that is included in several ordinances, eleven twenty-nine and twenty-two nineteen, to name a few. Policy ten, guide development, especially in lower-density residential areas, to minimize outdoor light pollution. We have no idea what lighting demands will be required for this development. The designers and handicap also do not know. Policy eleven, encourage the reduction of the urban heat island effect. The proposed amendment is over four million square feet of large concrete buildings, the largest of which are five to six stories. And if an option is exercised, one building will be over five football fields in length. The project can be described as tilt-up concrete buildings surrounded by surface parking and asphalt. This project is the definition of a heat island. Policy twelve, encourage substantial drought-tolerant landscaping in public and private projects to maintain a heavily landscaped feel to the community while reducing the consumption of water. The proposed project, well, literally any project can meet this policy. I just want to add something. I'm a native to Arizona and have lived in Gilbert since nineteen ninety-two, so I understand the need for change. I understand the need for rezoning. I feel like this project is far too intense and in the wrong location next to a neighborhood like this. I find it too much that all the warehouses are backing up to our homes. So with that, I thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Barbara Lucia, Patty Palmeroy, and then Brent Henningson.
Hello, my name is Barbara Lucas. I'm a resident of Gilbert, living in Morrison Ranch. I'm not going to really go over what I prepared since it's been covered for the most part, but I do want to respond to a couple of things. I agree, the general plan does need to be a little flexible. My understanding, though, is it should be compelling reasons to change, not opportunistic reasons, in order to develop something to make money. When we look at the area of Elliott Groves, we've had three general plan rezonings since the general plan was ratified in August of twenty twenty. On the northwest corner of Power and Elliott, seventeen acres were rezoned to general industrial. On the southeast corner of Warren and Swan, twenty acres rezoned to industrial. The southwest corner of Warner and Swan, another twenty-five acres. And now we're looking to add yet another two hundred and eighty-four acres of industrial. This essentially encapsulates the Elliott Groves area on all sides except one. When people look to buy their houses, they do rely on that general plan. The plan informs them on whether it's the right decision. And when you look at a purchase of a house for that individual citizen, this is the biggest financial investment they're going to make. And to put something the size of this immediately adjacent to residences is going to devalue those residences. About two weeks ago, I and a few neighbors met with the developers in hopes of finding some common ground. Some common ground that might reduce some of this footprint of industrial and try and transition it towards the master plan design for this area and the character. Unfortunately, we really have not received anything in writing so far from the developer that would help meet that. Enclosure, this enormous park, industrial park, does not fit the general plan, design, or intent. It does not fit the Morrison Ranch character, and if implemented, is going to negatively impact not only the value of the resident's biggest financial investment, their homes, but the quality of their life for all Morrison Ranch residents between traffic and safety concerns with an industrial park this size. So I do strongly oppose this project, and I hope you will too. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up, we've got Patty Palmeroy, and then I've got Brent Henningson and Diana Chambers.
Hate these things. Find them necessary. My name is Patty Palmeroy. I live in Elliott Groves, and obviously, we, along with the new neighborhood south of us, are most impacted by this proposed. I don't have a bunch of numbers and various things like that to spout off tonight, and I think that's been well done so far and will probably be done more. Rather, I want to speak to you from my heart more. I feel like the developers have tried to do a really good job of telling us how wonderful this will be, and they show the designs, and the buildings looked really pretty, and they've got this wonderful entrance coming in off of Power and et cetera, et cetera. And I'm sorry, we've all heard this, but to me, that's putting lipstick on a pig, but it's still a pig. And to me, that's what these buildings are. I also, to Adam, who I know personally, he's a great, great guy, great family, have nothing bad to say about him, but he lives more than a quarter mile north of Elliott and just a few houses down from Recker. So the immediate impact of this development is not on him and his neighborhood. It's on those of us that are south of Elliott and just west of this project. Sorry, I had some things written, and then all the talking, my mind just started going. I've talked to a number of realtors, and the last lady brought up about the property values, and I think this is a big concern. My husband and I, unfortunately, with all of this, are there for the duration. We told our kids when we moved in that we were there until they put us in assisted living or six feet under. So we're not going anywhere. But everybody I've asked about it, they said, if this, if this goes in, we're moving. We're going to sell. We're moving. But then the question comes up, who's going to want to buy into this neighborhood? And at what price will they be willing to buy into the neighborhood? Certainly not as much as even some of the other areas of Morrison Ranch, and definitely not at the value that they might be able to get now before this is all put into play. So I have concerns about that, too. I don't feel like the plan in any way enhances our homes, our neighborhood, our community. I don't see the residents in our area working in a complex like this. I just, I don't feel it brings the kind of jobs that, that this area in particular are going to be looking for. I just don't see anything about this that enhances. So I did like the comments that were made about doctors' offices, restaurants, and so forth. I don't really know exactly what I think should go in there, but I beg you, please don't let it be this.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we've got Brent Henningson. I'm sorry?
That's right.
Okay. Diana Chambers, and then Kevin Marvin.
Okay. Good evening. My name's Brent Henningson. I'm a resident of Morrison Ranch in the Elliott Groves community, and I am strongly opposed to the ranch and urge you to do everything in your power to stop it. Here are a list of reasons that I am strongly opposed to the ranch. So first, residents of Morrison Ranch purchased their homes, which for many people is their single largest investment, based on the zoning in the current general plan. To drastically change the zoning now to what is being proposed would be a breach of trust and would financially injure residents of Morrison Ranch. Two, approving the ranch would destroy the character of the Morrison Ranch community. A swath of expansive and towering structures would be completely inconsistent with the surrounding area. The Morrison Ranch community is a gem within the town of Gilbert. It is a highly sought-after planned community that would be marred and destroyed by these monstrous buildings. Third, while a general plan should retain some flexibility to adapt to changing needs and conditions of the town, the proposed zoning would result in a material and significant amendment and would disregard the vision of this area in Gilbert. The applicants have not demonstrated, in my view, or in the view of anyone who objectively looks at the proposal, that the ranch would be an improvement over the current zoning. In fact, it would be an obvious step backward to accommodate developers and their attorneys. And fourth, changing the proposed zoning to allow massive buildings to tower over residential homes would be irresponsible and damage the legacy and reputation of those who approve it. For these reasons, I strongly urge you to ensure that the ranch is not approved. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Next up, I have Diana Chambers.
She had to leave.
I'm sorry?
She had to leave.
She had to leave, okay. She is opposed, says we need to find a reasonable compromise considering the needs of all. Next up, I've got Kevin Marvin. And then I've got Lisa, I'm sorry, Siz. I may have that very wrong, I apologize. And then Alex Bujia.
Hi, I'm Kevin Marvin, and I live in Elliott Groves, south of Elliott and east of, east of Recker. So, you know, it's personal, right? Because I moved here under these conditions, and now it's changing. And it's changing quite a bit. I know the, I've listened to all the different both sides, right? And I would always, I'm an engineer, so I'd always look for, you know, is there a solution? And it just seems like it's so much more. Like if those middle buildings could move to Power, and there could be something meaningful to transition it, then maybe. But it's so different, and it so changes the character. There's nothing I can add that hasn't already been said. But, I mean, for everyone in the council, do any of you live in Elliott Groves? That's my one question. And if you don't, would you want to live in Elliott Groves with this going up? I mean, if you can look yourself in the mirror before you vote, that would be real helpful because you're going to be looking at each and every one of us. And I'm not, there are so many people who live right up against it, I feel so bad for them. I don't live right up against it, but I live close enough that I'm like, eh, great. And I really think about the property values, and I just think they're going down. And so, you know, that's just unfortunate. And I know that progress has to be made. I don't view these jobs as great, but maybe there are some jobs that are great, but there's not, to me, this just doesn't view, it's just not viewed that way. I don't get that. But maybe if you talk more about what that is, but those big buildings, that close to houses, just doesn't make sense. It just changes everything. If this were a golf course or something else, that would be different. But it just doesn't make sense. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Lisa? Is Lisa still here? Lisa is opposed, says she wishes to speak. I've got Alex Bujia, Bugai, Bugaiya? I'm sorry? Bugai?
I checked, parked the wrong box.
Okay. Strongly oppose rezoning at the ranch. And then finally, I've got Preston Yeschek, and you wish to speak? Are you still here?
Chairman?
Yeah.
Preston was in the overflow room. I don't know if somebody could walk over there and see if he would like to speak. Thank you. Oh, here he is.
All right, perfect. And Preston, you are our final speaker that I've got a card for, so you've got three minutes.
Right, I'm usually last because my last name is Y. I'm used to it. My name is Preston Yeschek. I live in the Elliott Groves community in Morrison Ranch, and I'd like to express opposition to this and other excessive development activities in Gilbert. The excessive commercial, you know, high-density residential areas and, you know, concrete megaliths that are going up all over Gilbert, it's, it's against the spirit and heritage of the town. And, you know, we can make the buildings as pretty as we want, we can make that divider wall ten feet higher, we can, you know, make the traffic quieter, but it's not going to change the fact that these buildings are present in our town. You know, we complain about traffic, but we don't attack the problem at the source, which is we continue to approve development activities and rezoning in favor of things like this. You know, developers herald the jobs that they create, but they come at the cost of violating the values that make Gilbert so appealing to us. You know, personally, I think that the residential buildings and, you know, these prison compounds and concrete megaliths that we see everywhere, it's making me a bit claustrophobic, and I know that it is a lot of other people as well. It's almost like blotting out the sun at times, depending on where you're at. But, you know, I live in Elliott Groves, it's right on Power. There's a lot of farm heritage around there, particularly the Power Road Farmers Market. And I just don't see myself going to the Farmers Market to pick up some honey and coming home with a side of aircraft fuselage, you know? It's just not something that I see as appropriate in that area. How it was zoned before in the past, how it's zoned now, it doesn't matter. It's about what we want today, citizens. So as Gilbert's precious remaining land dwindles, I think we should carefully consider which of these developer propositions that we entertain so that we retain our heritage and identity. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Eva, do we have anybody online? We, did we open it up online for people to speak? No? Okay. All right, with that, I'll go back to the applicant. Adam, do you have anything you'd like to address? Any comments?
I think one of the, the beauty of this process is the citizen engagement. When you think about what zoning does and how it involves public hearings and neighbor meetings, city council members that make decisions and planning commissioners that have to weigh facts and, and make recommendations, right? You sit as a recommending body, and you hear these kind of comments from time to time. There's a lot of information to weigh. I think the challenge, as all cities who go through a growth cycle experience, is there's always something new being built along the edge of a growing town. And in this case, I think what we're proposing to do for many people is just too far for what they expected when they moved to the area. And I certainly can understand why that sentiment is that way. As I look back at this property, though, I, I hear some of the comments like, do a mixed-use project, or that mixed-use requires a residential component. Or frankly, the plan that was before you today, in some argument, could be a mixed-use project, except for there is no market for that. So I'm left wondering, what, what do you do with the property otherwise? There's, maybe there's a different configuration that somebody else can come up with. Maybe there's a different configuration that the designer and this team can, can consider. But I look at the balance of the whole, and some of the comments are made, like noting three different rezone cases that went to industrial recently indicate that that's what this corridor is, an industrial corridor. As I consider some of the goals and policies, general plan, as mentioned by neighbors, there's equally other policies that support it, like having a balanced framework of land uses across town, whereas industrial is a very, very relatively low land use category relative to the significant amount of residential that's out there. At the end of the day, I think both sides will come up with a different point, position, a policy, goal, whatever, to support their, their perspective. As I look at this, I just think to myself, well, if the present zoning really hasn't been able to be achieved, how long do you wait? I mean, seriously, how long do you wait? Because my hunch tells me that waiting will evolve land use trends and changes, just like we used to have a blockbuster and a Hollywood video at retail shopping centers that don't happen anymore because land use trends change. And so what we're trying to do is stay relevant with the marketplace, bring something that actually makes sense with the airport over flights, that makes sense with the zoning that's presently along that corridor there. It makes sense with what the town is, I think, long expected to come in that corridor. As I sort of evaluate heat island impacts, and I think about how many cars would otherwise exist if this was a retail shopping center and a business park, certainly create way more heat island than what we'd have here today. As I think about trips related to this development today versus the proposed, certainly more under the proper proposal. But I think where we have work to do is particularly along our western edge. As it relates to the residents that join there, I can certainly appreciate- I can certainly appreciate the consideration and the comments and the feelings and the sentiments that they've shared. As I evaluate where we are and what was presently on the property today at that edge, where you have some GC and some BP and some LI. Clearly LI was planned there, but closer to the apartments that are planned. GC and BP are the two uses that are, I think, most proximate to the neighbors. Candidly, I don't believe GC in the middle of the property, half mile west of Power Road, has any vi- um, viability at all. Um, but to, to what those uses represent, which are essentially smaller buildings and lower heights, are considerations that, um, we've been evaluating as we've heard the feedback over the last few weeks. And so I've met with a number of different people, and frankly, I don't think I'll ever change anybody's mind. But I think the feedback that I've heard has helped us, um, evaluate, you know, what changes we need to make along that edge. Everything from softening it to landscape enhancements, to theming walls and amenity spaces, to lowering building heights, um, breaking up massing, all things that, uh, I think we are hearing and are looking and implementing and working towards, and hopefully by the time we present to you, um, soon, in two weeks, we'll be able to have some revisions. But I guess my point in saying all this is, I do believe this is a good land use case. I do understand why there's a lot of sentiments shared, and I think there's some things that are worth exploring along, along some of that western edge. But I don't know if it's gonna be significant enough to change what is the overall nature of the project, which is an industrial project with some commercial shopping centers at the intersection, which is highly appropriate and long expected at this corridor. So, my feelings only, the, the, the beliefs of my client, that's my job to do. But I'm willing to take the feedback, and I think particularly look for some direction. If there's some things that we have, um, missed or need to examine, those are the kind of, uh, benefit of this meeting today, to take it so that is that.
Alright, thank you. Uh, questions or comments for the applicant or staff at this point? Yeah, Commissioner Johnson?
I have an observation. We appear to be in a time machine here. In nineteen twenty-seven, there was a very famous case called Euclid versus Ambler. It is the very genesis of urban planning. In that case, a small community very much like Morrison Ranch came up against an industrial developer adjacent property. The courts found in favor of the community because they felt it was an incursion on the character and the rights of the community. So it seems like ninety-five years later, the rooster has come back to settle here, and I don't know if the result will be the same, but was very curious of what happens in history in this time machine we see here in the community or the town of Gilbert. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Anybody else?
Chair, I had a question for the applicant.
Yeah, Commissioner Davis.
Um, Adam, I was wondering, um, how this compares to the building sizes that are north of the airport nearby? For instance, the Dexcom Building. That's a cross-dock facility, I believe, so I'd like to know what the comparisons are between those two, if you have that, or perhaps that could be at the next meeting?
I don't know what.
Okay.
I've heard the name. I'm sure I've seen the building, I can't figure it out right now, but I can.
Okay, thank you.
You're thinking like square footage size?
Yeah, I'm curious what the comparisons are.
I think the Dexcom Building's about six hundred and fifty thousand square feet.
Okay, thank you.
Alright. Uh, questions or comments with regards to the project? No? So, I've got a couple of comments, um, with regards to the site as it sits today and the proposed. I think, you know, obviously, this has always been envisioned as a, as an employment hub or a corridor, um, along Power Road and a, and a power corridor for that, with lack of a better word. And I think that it's very important that we remember that when we look at this, um, with regards to what types of uses can go into this area, and we take a look at, um, south of this with the Target Center, the Walmart Center south of that. Um, north of it, we've got the Fries going in. If you go further north up into, um, some of the Mesa area, we've got, um, the malls, we've got Santan Mall to the west. Um, not too far away, we've got Bash's, um, just right in the middle of Morrison Ranch. So we kind of look at this and say, okay, well, really what could fit in this spot? So I, I agree with the applicant that we've gotta look at the uses. I think that there definitely has room for, uh, improvement with regards to the layout of the site. I agree with, uh, a few of the neighbors where I think that, um, if, if we had these big buildings right up against, uh, residential, I could have some concern there, but I do, uh, believe that the applicant's done a great job with regards to the, the distance, the two hundred feet that they've given, or two hundred and sixty-two feet, or whatever it was that they've given there. So there's a number of things that I think are going well. I don't think that it's quite there yet. I'm not going to give position on this, obviously, because we're not doing that tonight, but I think that, that we know that this use, as it stands today with regards to height, can go actually higher than what's being proposed. You could argue that's further away from the residents than, than closer to the residents. At this point, they're closer. But I think that, I think that there's merit to what's happening here. I definitely think that there's some things that need to happen with regards to that western edge. I think the applicant's already stated that. Um, and there, it sounds like there's been some good dialogue. Um, I don't believe that this necessarily will go away. Um, obviously, we do have another meeting on the twentieth that will be listening to this, and I'll, I'll be encouraged to see, um, changes that the applicant is willing to propose at that point. So, unless there's any other comments or questions for staff or the applicant, we'll go ahead and close, um, public hearing. There is no action tonight on this, so we don't need to bring it back up to the dais. We'll go ahead and close that, move on to the next agenda item. Unless anybody else has anything they'd like to add. Yeah? Yeah?
So I think as far as, if staff's kind of looking for commission input, I mean, we get cases like this, and it creates longer meetings for all of us, but, you know, the public discourse, we find that we often get a better proposal out of it in the long run. And it also builds awareness for the town's general plan, which is always a good thing. I've got a list of items, but again, we'll probably save this for the meeting on the twentieth, but when I look at this, it's really a substantial proposal, probably the largest that I've seen in recent memory. Um, and it's at the town's eastern gateway, uh, along two major arterials. So, you know, when we do these major general plan amendments, they deserve scrutiny, and they get scrutiny. And for me, it's really looking at the short-term gains versus the long-term goals when we get into this. So, I think with all that, this proposal would fundamentally change the look and feel, especially that eastern portion of the Morrison Ranch, the planned development. So, I think as far as where I'm at currently, um, that's kind of why I'm struggling with this proposal. So that's kind of where I'm at. Thank you, Chair.
Alright. Does anybody else wish to comment? Commissioner Davis?
I guess, um, I echo Commissioner Bianchi's, um, comments to some degree. I think I do have concerns with the number of cross-dock facilities, the types of traffic that invokes versus, um, you know, somebody driving their car to work, there's a lot of trucks coming in and out of there. Putting that right next to the residential, definitely something to look at. Um, so I do think the applicant does need to look at ways to design this site plan to better buffer the neighborhood. So, I guess that's where I'm at right now, but I am struggling as well.
Alright, thank you. Anybody else, else like to add anything? Alright, with that, we will move on. Um, thank you all for coming out this evening. I know that, uh, you've taken a lot of time and your thoughts and concerns are well noted and taken into consideration, so thank you very much. Alright. Um, we're gonna go ahead and take a five-minute break while the room clears, and then we will come back. So, five minutes.
Science. She was, she was part of the science, science and the, part of their polytechnic, not the polytechnic, I'm sorry. She was part of, uh, space and, space and engineering. Doctor. Major in geology and sci- geology sciences. So she changed and moved to, um, a school called the Southern University of Versi, and it's an online program for science and tech. And so she's doing a bachelor's in science and geo-science. So she's again, still staff in geo-science, so it kind of backs up. So she topography, engineering, water resources, she's doing the minor in natural resources. So we'll see what she ends up doing, I don't know. My other daughter is also interested in natural resources. She has a single, just that she just started her own university. Uh, I have not, I, I. No, my daughter, my, they're both, all my kids are, my sons are, but he goes to Swan Lake, too. He got, you know, I he was actually in junior high fall, in spring break. Nailed our D's, so I don't have any thoughts to get to start. Oh, for sure.
Yeah.
For sure, and they won't even look back, because if you go to, um, so he was at, to Perry High School, it was his primary kindergarten. But we all are getting, he was supposed to be at Perry. This mess, he had people going to each other, has been a mess, but all my programs were covered by. So all of the parents were wanting to scatter it, and so we all went to different churches. They actually, they actually worked on someone, and I don't know, I don't know that is. He, he was at A C for a while, and then he was in a band, Chris Fair, so I'm just um, but to ask for presentation, because I think you can't transfer into a public school from a charter school in high school. They're pretty strong to transfer. They would, they'll take babies, they'll say, you can transfer, you can't. That's right, or you'll start over. We wanted to see parents. That's why they're bringing up it, so we would be, so it's a we'll send out, takes dollars, that's what we did. It was, it was really sad, because I suddenly did walk to school that, like, last fall this year. And, oh, that's nice. It's not my fault, I do it. Every day, and it, he, my husband, um, is now retired. And so, um, he just he's seventeen, sixteen and a half years old. He comes and chills with dad, and I, you know, he's yeah, he's coming going, how's it going? You know? And I said, well, that's his problem. He has to get up tomorrow morning and have school, so he's dragged on his age, so he'll have to pack his my problems. By twenty-one hours, he's over. Six bucks, he's paying tuition. No, she's, that's not. That's right, you learn real fast. That's called life lessons. You know, a lot of the, 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 my, my, I grew up in a weird time. I went to college in, in half-online, half-in-person, like I went in-person for a while. Um, I was, I was too, almost, I was I was sixteen, I had the and then I had another one twenty-one months later, and then I was divorced. And so I started my school, and started doing university physics on nineteen. Yay, somewhere in there, and I'm working, and I kind of, you know, they started doing something that didn't exist. So I slowly, like, in went into that, yeah. It was more convenient, because I could work and, I was still working. Yeah, it was, when I met my husband, he was doing night school at University of Phoenix, and working during the uh, I worked in, he was a, I worked in a I was like, it's such a I was a I was a and and they were helping ourselves. And then yeah, and then I went back. Yeah, so, um, I did my I had a couple of different ideas, I was special. During the I don't know, they fell out two thousand and twenty. I'm a graduate. That G C, um, uh, I did the licensure, I received another bachelor's. So I'm at University of Phoenix. Now I work at the University of Phoenix. I work in all of the space and everything, all of my work. I'm
Alright, we're gonna go ahead and
All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started here. Okay, appreciate y'all being patient with us. Um, we're gonna go ahead and move on to DR twenty-one dash one eighty Morrison Ranch commercial. And Eva, I believe you're covering for Josh, you wanna give us a presentation on this one?
Good evening Chairman and Commission, and yes, Josh is a little under the weather this evening, so I'll be covering his case. As mentioned, it is a design review case. Is there a reason I can't get this to? Oh, there we go, I'm sorry. The site is located on the northwest corner of Power and Elliott. It's about a twenty-one acre site, and it's in the Morrison Ranch Business Park, PAD. What is being proposed is a one hundred twenty-five thousand square foot major grocery anchor, that is a fries grocery, and about seventeen thousand square foot of attached retail to that grocer. In addition, there is a fueling station and five pad sites proposed on this property. Outlined in red is what the design review for tonight is. Not all the pads are in this design review. The major grocery anchor and the attached retail are, that's the large red block. Two of the five pads are, those are the two smaller blocks, and the fueling station, which is the medium sized red block in the upper right hand corner. The landscape plan exceeds what's required by code, fifteen percent landscaping is required, twenty-one percent is proposed. They will follow the Morrison Ranch theme, they'll have the white vinyl fences and the pecan trees and the pink oleanders. And they're also meeting the arterial corner, the fifty by two hundred fifty square foot landscape portion in the lower corner there on the plan. The elevations, they have the colors and materials they selected to meet a rural agricultural design of the Morrison Ranch community. There's a mix of materials, there's two different CMUs, split face and smooth, there's fiber cement board, there's metal accents and along with brick. Here is the rear side of those buildings. There is a stipulation in your packet that prior to building permit, the applicant will work with staff to better shield the rooftop mechanical units. Here are the elevations for the shops that are attached to the retail, again, to the, sorry, to the grocer. Again, they continue the same rural agricultural theme. And here are shops B and C, these are the detached pad buildings. Again, similar building materials, similar theme. Lastly, we have the fueling center, that's again in your northeast corner of this site. This again follows the same theme and is connected to the fries grocer. Here are a close up of the colors and materials that are being proposed for this site. And based on this exceeding the requirements of code, staff is recommending approval. However, it is subject to six conditions that are in your staff report, and the one stipulation that's shown here, and thank you to Commissioner Bianchi for making us aware that this is one of our normal stips, and it was just left out of the report. So this is nothing new, it's just a correction. So, uh, staff is recommending approval with the six stipulations in the staff report, plus this one additional stipulation regarding FAA regulations. And that concludes my report, unless there are any comments or questions for me at this time.
Right, any comments or questions for Eva at this time? No, all right, and I'm assuming we probably don't need a presentation by the developer?
I, I don't believe so, unless they would like to present.
And then I don't have any comment cards?
No, it's really just to tell you about the added stipulation.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time, we'll bring it up, back up to the dais for comments, um, or a motion if there is one.
So moved.
Um, is that a move to approve recommendation to council?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we've got a, uh, motion to approve recommendation to council on DR twenty-one dash eighty Morrison Ranch Commercial Center.
Chair, I'm sorry, this is a DR case, so it doesn't go to council.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, thank you. So, recommendation to approve, uh, motion to approve the DR.
I'll second that.
I've got a, uh, motion by Commissioner Johnson and a second by Commissioner Bianchi, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Wow, brain went on lockdown there for a second. All right, um, we'll move on. Item twelve and thirteen are on continuance, but we do have, um, a couple comment cards here, of community members who wish to speak, so I'll go ahead, and, um, if you'd like to move up, if you are still interested in speaking, I've got Brett Ryan and Laura Ruiz. So if you would like to speak, come on down to the podium, um, state your name, and then, um, you've got three minutes.
Hello, uh, my name is Brett Ryan, I live at Jake's Ranch, seven fifty-nine East Broadway. Uh, thank you for the, uh, the time this evening. This is regarding the Stillwater Rivillon, um, multi-family high, um, project. And I just wanted to, I know it's been continued, but I felt, um, the need to still come and speak as I had sent comments, before to, um, Ashley. So I, I just wanna comment, general comment about multifamily. I've been, uh, I'm a Gilbert native also, um, lived here since nineteen seventy-eight, seen a lot of changes, um, in town, and I, I just generally, I'm, I'm kinda, um, done with the multifamily. There's a lot of multifamily going up. And it, I think we just need to take a step back at this point and, um, evaluate that. This is in the Rivillon area, and as the commission had noted earlier, it's, it's a great area. We go there quite often, we ride our bikes there, we walk there, um, the designs are great. The, the landscaping is great, we enjoy it, um, we work out there at the, at the club. But this, this does not fit Rivillon. Five stories, the added height. Uh, you can tell me how far it's set back off of Pecos it is. I've seen the elevations. I don't care if you're on the third floor, fourth floor, fifth floor, you're gonna look right down into eight hundred thousand dollar home backyard. And, um, I know there's a property north that's being developed, um, hopefully similar designs to the rest of Rivillon. But, um, that'll help probably block that some, I get that, but, um, this design doesn't fit the design that's there. I think it needs some work, um, I hope they can work on it some. It's underparked, they're asking an another stipulation in another case to borrow parking from the adjacent empty, and believe me, they're empty, we see it all the time, offices next door, that's why they're borrowing. They're trying to put twenty acres on a ten acre site. And that's evident from the reduced parking dimensions, the reduced setbacks, and the reduced landscaping that they're asking for. They even, they even state that they're using, um, six by six diamonds in places where, um, they can, that aren't covered. Well, ninety percent of the parking's covered, so, you know, I've seen the site plan, there, there are no diamonds. Um, there, there's a lot of things that could be worked on in this, um, proposal. And, um, I know Adams and his group, and we've known each other for a long time, and, um, I've contributed architecturally to a ton of projects in this town, I'm proud of, and I would not be proud of this one. I think it needs some work, so, thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Uh, and Lori Ruiz, or Laura Ruiz, I'm sorry.
Thank you so much, I'll try to keep this brief. Um, I just jotted down a couple quick notes. I have a couple questions, first of all, uh, when was the last feasibility and impact studies done for this particular project? And how do they impact education, um, in particular, in addition to traffic and public resources? And if the feasibility for education was recently done, how do they address the financial and academic performance implications that a project of this size would have on the local schools that would, that would be assigned to this property? Currently, the neighboring and adjacent communities have a density, um, most homes are between seven and ten thousand square feet lots, uh, which translates into about a four to six, um, residences per acre. I know this is about ten acres, and so if each household had approximately four persons living in it, ten acres at the current density, current zoning, would be about two hundred and fifty people. And our current schools, both elementary and high schools, were based and built upon the current zoning and density, regulations, sorry. If we go to this high density, I think the, the developer's asking for up to fifty units per acre. It's going from general office to up to fifty units. That would add two thousand residences, two thousand individuals, up to two thousand individuals in this one, um, development. And if half of those individuals were students, uh, maybe a mother, father, and two kids living in an apartment, that could translate into a thousand additional students for the elementary and high school, schools, both Quartz Hill and Campo Verde. Um, I did a little bit of research, my kids graduated, went through both of those schools, and Quartz Hill, um, has a max student capacity of five hundred and forty-six. So if half of those additional thousand students or young people were to go to Quartz Hill, that would be a two hundred percent increase. This Quartz Hill is already overpopulated, uh, likewise with, with Campo Verde, it's also overpopulated, and an additional five hundred students could translate into ten or more additional portables at the high school. If we look at what we're looking for for our future, I know somebody mentioned, um, not just the current impact on these developments, but the future impact on the Gilbert community. We're looking for well-educated students, that translates in the future to a dynamic and well-educated workforce. Already, our student teacher ratios in these schools are in excess of what Gilbert Public Schools, um, has for an average. I think we're at eighteen, uh, students per one staff member, and that, of course, includes ancillary staff. And our current test scores at both the elementary and high school at Quartz Hill and Campo Verde are already declining, and additional students infiltrating these schools will further impact that. And we will continue to have reduced test scores and a less educated workforce in the future. So that's something that I would like to find out, how are they looking at their impact studies on the educational piece for this? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Um, Ashley, I'm sure you took notes on that and can work on that for when we see that in the future. Um, so those are continued. Um, we'll move on to item, um, fourteen and fifteen. Do we need a motion, and we do need a motion to, uh, I need a motion to approve the continuance of item twelve and thirteen.
So, Chairman, I would move to continue GP twenty-two dash zero nine and Z twenty-two dash zero seven to November second hearing, is that when they're scheduled?
All right, so I've got a motion to, uh, continue, do I have a second?
Commissioner, before we vote, can I ask Ashley a question?
I was, sure, sorry.
But, Ashley, as I've been listening to people, I've also, among the, the comments that are attached, I didn't see them earlier, the, the emails, there's a disproportionate number that are talking about not being notified. Have we looked into, is that, is this one of those ones where we've got a lot of comments from people who are further away? Or is there something being done, or is, is that part of the continuance?
Chairman and Commissioner Fay, um, because this area is quite a distance from those other communities, and in set into the center of that Rivillon development, uh, there is a, a, uh, limited number of people that were notified, but their requirement was met.
Okay, that's perfect, thank you.
All right, perfect. So I do have a, uh, motion to approve the continuance on the table by Commissioner Bianchi.
I will second them.
Excuse me, the, the motion is to continue.
To continue.
Thank you. Yeah, I will second that motion.
And I've got a second by Commissioner Fay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to item fourteen and fifteen, uh, GP twenty-two oh six Lindsay two oh two and Z twenty-two oh six Lindsay two oh two Industrial Park, Business Park. Keith. The limelight is all yours.
All right, sounds great, thank you. Chair, Simon, members of the commission, um, this next project that I have before you tonight is, as you stated, um, Lindsay two oh two Industrial Business Park. So the site, uh, for this, um, project is located, obviously it's highlighted in, uh, in front of you on the screen there, in the middle of the, the aerial, but I just wanted to provide a little, um, so it's at the northwest, sorry, it's at the north, um, east corner of Lindsay and Jermaine, just south of the two oh two, and also some regional context to provide, uh, for you. It's in the Gilbert two oh two growth area. And also, some developments that are nearby regionally are the Rivillon, which we just had, talked about a little bit, over there, kind of north and west of the project, north of the two oh two, uh, Gilbert Road. And then you also have the Santan Motorplex not too far away, kinda north and, north and, and east. And then there's some industrial development, um, that i- is existing further to the west as you get closer to Gilbert Road, and then a commercial power center, so there's a lot of different uses and things in this area. So as far as the, um, and, and then, earlier in one of the previous presentations, it was already addressed about the major general plan amendment process, so I don't think I really need to go over that too much. But this project is also going to be heard, uh, by the end of the year. We have the, the second hearing coming up on October twentieth, and then, and then Town Council action, I believe, is November fifteenth, but I'll talk, I'll show you that in another slide later. As far as the request is concerned, it's a, it's a major general plan amendment going from general office, to industrial on ninety point one seven acres, and then from general office to general commercial on a smaller piece, on a little over, almost four acres. And then a proposed rezone from business park to light industrial on ninety point one seven acres, and then, bit, from business park to general commercial on three point nine zero acres. And to kind of break that down, here's the general plan exhibit that shows you. Um, the whole entire site is outlined, but the, um, the ninety point one seven acres is everything but that little tiny piece in the northwest corner, that will be, is, that's the site that is being proposed for the major general, or for the, for, to go from, um, to go from general office to light and dust, or to industrial, uh, general plan classification. And then the small piece up in that northwest corner is the commercial piece that will be going from, from general office to commercial. And then the zoning exhibit, basically the same thing, it says that, except that you have, um, it going from business park zoning to light industrial zoning, so just a little bit different in the, in the names of the categories and of zoning versus general plan, so basically the same thing. So, those are tho- that's the zoning exhibit, pretty self-explanatory from that standpoint. The, here's the conceptual site plan. Obviously, this would not be approved with the proposed general plan amendment and rezone, uh, requests that are gonna be moving forward to council, it's just a conceptual drawing for you to visualize what's happening on this site. And I also wanna, to bring to your awareness that we do have a concurrent design review case that's currently in review, that will be coming before you in the, in the coming months, and then you'll see more details on the exact site design. But this concept, eighty-seven point nine zero net acres for the site. And we have employment industrial uses for about one point three million square feet of building space. And then you can see those buildings there on the screen, they're the kind of yellow hatched, um, uh, buildings, and they're, they're labeled pretty well. So, in those buildings will have some incidental office space, so with a total of about fifty-four thousand square feet of office space, combined for all six of those, those employment industrial buildings. And then the retail portion up in the northwest corner will have, this plan shows one building, retail building, about ninety-eight hundred square feet. It's, it's a large restaurant slash retail building. We're still in the process of reviewing the design for that through the design review case, so you'll be able to see that come before you in the coming months. And then there's about eighteen hundred parking spaces, I think that number is gonna fluctuate a little bit, based on what you. based on what you see at the design review stage. And then site landscaping is about 20%, so that exceeds, well exceeds what is required. I believe it's 10% that's required for industrial, so 20% landscaping for this employment industrial portion, the 20% way, is way more in excess than what the code requires. And I think you'll be pleasantly surprised when you see the design review case as to the level of landscaping that they are proposing, not only internal to the project and in the parking areas, but also along the street frontages. As far as public participation is concerned, two neighborhood meetings were held, virtually, one in January and one in April. And we had 20 residents, surrounding property owners at the first meeting, and approximately 14 at the second meeting. They had various concerns. You can see what those concerns are on, on the screen. Attendees expressed concerns about additional traffic that would create, be created by the industrial, especially truck traffic. There were also questions about, about noise related to, to industrial types of uses. Truck noise more particularly. And maybe some uses generated by, by some of the industrial users. And then residents expressed concerns about the actual uses that were permitted in light industrial. And we kind of went over some of those things in the study session in September concerning what those types of light industrial uses could be on the site, based on the proposed zoning district of LI. And then they talked about building size in proximity to their homes, and then the impact on, of course, to them. Because there's a lot, there's some residents to the south. So those were the general concerns. And it is my understanding that even though 14 people showed up to the second neighborhood meeting, that the applicant was able to address a lot of those concerns. And many of those residents are now in support of the project. So as far as next steps are concerned, obviously, in October 20th, you'll, this will come before you again for this time for your recommendation and for further discussion. And then November 15th, the town council hearing will take place on November 15th. And of course, the design review approval, that is to be determined, or the consideration for that, will be coming before you in the, in the, in the coming months. We don't have an exact date for that yet. But that's it. That concludes my presentation for the Lindsay 202 business park project. And if I, if you have any questions?
Right, thanks Keith. Any questions or comments for Keith? Commissioner Bianchi.
Keith, so you talked about there's a concurrent DR case. Do you, can you speak to how they're going to encourage kind of traffic entry, primarily the trucks in and out off to Lindsay? And away from kind of maybe, what's the street to the south? Is that Jermaine?
Jermaine.
And near the high school? Have there been any staff feedback or traffic's feedback on that?
Chair Simon, Commissioner Bianchi, there has been some staff feedback on that. I, I believe some of those entrances and traffic, if they're here, I don't know if they're here. They might be able to speak more to that, Aaron Pinkerton. But I know that we've made some comments during the first review of the design review case about some of the entrances on Jermaine potentially moving or be relocate, or being relocated or even closed. But I don't know much about the entrances off of Lindsay Road. So if Aaron maybe could provide a little more clarity on that, that'd be fantastic. He's our expert. On that.
Fortunately, I'm not the expert on this one. I haven't been as involved. My teammate that's generally involved is on vacation today. But we have been working with the, the developer and kind of outlining how to make those accesses most usable and to kind of, with the traffic flow. Particularly the, the south, west corner there, how to make that a right-in, right-out to really flow better, to flow, working with the fire, the fire building across the street. And working with the access at Lindsay Road to maintain that the congestion won't back on towards the freeway and make sure we have enough storage capacity there. So we're working through those things. And I believe the signal on Jermaine may not be there, but I'll have to verify that one.
So we'll verify that for the meeting on the 20th?
Certainly.
Okay, yeah, because that's my concern as far as impact. Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments for Keith? Is the applicant here would like to give a presentation? There we go. Got it.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, Benjamin Tate with Withy Morris, 2525 East Arizona Biltmore Circle. Delighted to be here with you this evening to talk about Lindsay 202. This is a project that is being developed by Creation, which is an arm of LGE Design Group. Which if you're familiar at all with the work that they've done around town, is just a tremendous group when it comes to design, to aesthetics, really creating thoughtful projects. I think one of the best examples would probably be the collab, which is in the Heritage District. If you're not familiar with it, please take a look, because I think it's a really great example of the kind of work that they do. Keith already covered a lot of this, so I'll try to move it quickly. It's the northeast corner of Jermaine and Lindsay, about 94 gross acres. And you know, there was some conversation earlier on in this hearing on another case, talking about general plan amendments and change, necessitating changes in the general plan. So the big question with this one is what's changed? And what necessitates a change in the land use plan that may not have existed before? And that's the interchange at Lindsay Road and the 202. So they're building a full diamond interchange at, at Lindsay, which is really a game changer when it, when it comes to what is the potential and what's the highest and best use of this site. So as Keith mentioned, it's currently zoned for business park. We are proposing to change it from business park to about 90 acres of light industrial and a little less than four acres of general commercial. It's currently zoned for general office on that same 94 acres. We are requesting to change that to about 94 acres, or sorry, 90 acres of land use designation of industrial. And again, a little less than four acres of general commercial. And what we are proposing to do with that 94 acres is to change, is to develop Lindsay 202, which is an employment and light industrial business park. That full diamond interchange really brings about some new uses and potential and economic benefit to the site that did, did not exist for general office. And as I'm sure you guys have noticed particularly, sorry, not just in this corridor, but around the valley, especially with the pandemic and the changes in the way that people work. 94 acres of general office is just no longer feasible or really desirable from a development perspective. So that begs the question of what's the best use of this property? So what we are proposing is a six-building employment campus with building heights ranging from 32 to 40-foot clear heights. That translates to about a 55-foot height to top a parapet. And buildings that are about 100,000 to 500,000 square feet. Now, those can be demised into spaces as small as 20,000 square feet. And really, the purpose of this project is to attract a range of potential users, but really focusing more on tech-focused and light manufacturing types of uses, which might, may not require a building as large as 500,000 or even 100,000 square feet. So really trying to create the most flexible space we can to attract really high-value tenants and users to the property. And then at that small corner that Keith pointed out and that I pointed out in my presentation, a small restaurant and retail component, it's about 3.3 acres net, 3.9 when you get to the gross. Two pads with, and the site plan that it was in Keith's presentation was a little bit outdated. That was an older version. We're actually showing two pads now with a total of about 16,000 and change square feet of, of commercial and retail. At that corner, where we will be putting a new signal at Lindsay Road. So really, a convenient space, not only for people coming off of the 202 freeway, but for folks that live in the neighborhoods to the south of here as well. And, and design, being really, as I go through, there's some more renderings here to go through. Probably the most important aspect of this project, aside from the land use. LGE and Creation are a company that really pride themselves on really thoughtful and interesting design. So that we're creating something that is not only useful and beneficial, beneficial from an economic perspective, but also really attractive. So I'll just cycle through a couple of these here. This would be looking at it, I believe, I'm going to look over to Jagger to make sure I'm getting it right. This would be looking across Jermaine Road to, north through the project. I'm seeing some nods over there. And so this would be really one of the main entrances to the project. If you were looking north through the projects towards the 202. This being one of the, example of one of the, the lower buildings, so we mentioned 32-foot clear heights. This would be some of the smaller-scale product, really tailored towards some of those smaller-scale users. This being that larger 40-foot clear height, 55-foot overall product. Again, really being thoughtful and interesting in the design. And as Keith mentioned, I think also this illustrates well the enhanced landscaping. This being a conceptual rendering of what some of the retail and restaurant space might look like. Again, if you haven't looked before, I'd encourage you to go to LGE's website and look at some examples of the types of restaurant and retail development they've done, because it's, it's really attractive, really interesting stuff that is very well, well patronized. This is our outreach timeline. It was actually tough to fit it all on the screen, so I apologize for the small font. We started out with a neighborhood meeting on what was originally a smaller version of this project. It was about 40 acres on the hard corner. We did that meeting in January. We followed that up with a meeting in April, which was a virtual, those two first, two meetings were virtual. We had a third meeting in June, but let me back up for just a second. April was a really important month for us, because that's when we started to get a lot more feedback from the neighborhood to get input on the project. And we've been really, really fortunate to have two really excellent neighborhood representatives who are here with us today, Tara and Krista, who have been really instrumental in helping to guide us and making some really thoughtful changes to the project to make it better for the, for the surrounding neighborhoods. So that led to a third neighborhood meeting in June of this year, which was actually an in-person neighborhood meeting held at Campo Verde High School, which is just next door to the project. And since then, continuing to solicit feedback and, and get more input from this, from the neighborhood and really using Krista and Tara as conduits to make sure that we're, we're providing some thoughtful changes to the project. This talks about some of the project benefits. So aside from creating the highest and best use and really creating some interesting design, I think the economic impact is the, the third and really probably the most compelling piece of this project. So just from the construction alone, we're looking at about a quarter billion dollar in wages. Quarter billion dollars in wages and about a half a billion dollars in total economic output. And about 27 and a half million dollars in tax revenue, with 7 million of that coming to the town of Gilbert. And after completion and stabilization, about 3,300 jobs and about 165 million dollars in annual wages. And about 1.3 million dollars in direct taxes to the town of Gilbert and about 1.8 million dollars to the school district. I'm going to jump past the question slide and just jump straight to this, since Keith had mentioned what had been some of the concerns of the neighborhood, so traffic being one of the biggest ones. And so, Mr. Bianchi, to your earlier question about traffic, since the original version of the site plan, we have actually made some significant changes as far as the circulation pattern to ensure that we're directing as much, and in fact, the majority of that truck traffic that's coming off of the 202 through the signal at Lindsay to circulate through the project to wherever their destination is. And then circulating back to the signal at Lindsay, so it's not spilling out onto Jermaine, which was one of the main concerns of the neighborhood. The proposed development, similar to the project that was proposed earlier, will generate significantly fewer daily trips than what it is zoned for today. So general office, just because of the turnover that you get with office types of uses, would generate about twice as much traffic as what we're proposing here. With about a 65% decline in the AM and PM peaks. So those peak hours, when it's really the worst, is actually where we're going to see the biggest declines. As far as noise is concerned, truck noise being probably the biggest one, and I'll go back to our site plan here so you can, so you can see it. We've oriented our buildings in a way so that there's not a truck court at any point in the project or a truck door that is actually facing a neighborhood that's exposed. So whether we've oriented the buildings in a way that they're being screened by other buildings or they're just completely facing away from a neighborhood, at no point is there an exposed truck door facing towards the neighborhood. In addition, our nearest buildings, as you could tell from the site plan, are approximately 130 feet. And in fact, I think at all points, a little bit more than 130 feet away from the property line. Noise from the actual users, all onsite tenant activity, whether it's manufacturing, et cetera, is enclosed within the buildings. There won't be any type of outdoor machinery that could cause any kind of noise. And most importantly, at full buildout, once this is actually all done, the project itself will actually be a considerable noise buffer from the freeway noise that those neighborhoods are getting now from the 202 freeway. And, and just simply putting all of those buildings and all of that landscaping in between the freeway and those neighborhoods will actually significantly decrease the, the noise pollution that they're getting right now from the freeway. And potential land uses, that was probably the thing that we've discussed most recently with Tara and Krista and their neighbors, is how can we restrict out some of the uses that are the biggest concerns? Industrial hemp is one of them. That's something that's allowed in the light industrial district. And we've come up with them, a list of uses that we've mutually agreed are ones that are undesirable to them and actually undesirable to us as well, and we will be restricting those privately through CCNRs. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant or comments? All right, not seeing any. Thank you very much. I do have two comment cards from public. I, not sure if you wish to speak. However, I've got a comment card from Tara Gramza. Did you wish to speak or just wish me to read it into? Okay, so she's, the developer and team has worked very hard for six months with our neighbors to solve concerns. Wonderful team. She's in favor of the product, project. And then Krista Vanderbolen. And do you wish to speak? Okay, and she's in favor. The developer and team has gone to great lengths to address specific community concerns for six months. For the past six months, for six months. With that, unless there's any questions or comments for either staff or the applicant, I don't have any other comment cards from public, so I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Oh, yeah.
Chair and Commissioner, if I can follow up, I looked at the recent TIA, and it's not showing a signal on Jermaine.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? No? We'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back up to the dais for comments and/or emotion. No, no motion tonight. We're just, any comments or discussion that we have? If none, we'll move on. All right, not seeing any. We'll go ahead and move on. Thank you very much. We are on item number 17, I believe, correct? 17, so we're on 17, Z 2204, Gabriella Point. Do we need a presentation on this? I have a public comment. We kept it on non-consent, as I've got online public comment as far as opposed to the project. Do, are we looking for a, anybody need to have a presentation from staff or the applicant on this? No? All right, so we're going to forego the presentation. I'm going to go ahead and read into the record those from public comment online. We have opposed. I've got Debbie Patrick is opposed. Barbara Lucas is opposed. Nellie Moller is opposed. Olivia Abramovitz is opposed. Michael Abramovitz is opposed. And Amanda Abramovitz is opposed. Unless any further discussion, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on this, bring it up to the dais for conversation and/or emotion. I don't see any comment. Is there a motion?
Chairman?
Yes.
As far as comments go, in review of the staff report, I think it provides a very good buffer between the max site from the east and to the north. There's extensive case conditions that the applicant and staff have been working to hammer out. I did have an overall issue with the amount of unit counts, but based off of the two zoning categories, I think it puts us right in that midsection at about 19 acres per, or 19 units per acre, if we combine them both. So even though it says it's at the higher end of the dwelling units per acre, I think if we take the whole total, it's much less than that. So if there's no other discussion, if you, I'd offer a motion.
Any other discussion? All right, entertain your motion.
Let me get there. All right, for the reasons set forth in the staff report, I would recommend approval to council for Z 22-04 as requested, subject to the conditions in the staff report.
All right, I have a motion on the table to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Commissioner Davis. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any. The motion carries. We'll move on. Yep. We'll move on from there to, where are we, 18? We'll move on from there to, where are we? Eighteen consent, nineteen consent, tabled twenty twenty-one? No, because that moved. So we're, I believe we're on item twenty-two. Is that correct? Oh, nineteen. Okay, so nineteen. I don't have a card on that. I don't have a card. However, okay, we're going to go to item number nineteen.
Chairman?
Yes.
You did have a card on this, but that person left.
Oh, that's right.
Tried the card.
That's right.
That's why it was taken off consent.
Okay. And it was continued to November second. So I would entertain a motion on number nineteen, S twenty-two dash oh two, Arbereda Estates, to continue to November second.
I would make a motion to continue item S twenty-two oh two to November second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Fay. Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
I have a second by Commissioner Johnson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll go ahead and jump to item twenty-two, Z twenty-two dash thirteen, mixed-use zoning districts. And I've got both Noah and Samantha on this. Samantha, you're presenting to us.
All right. Last but not least. Okay, so I'm going to kick this off and then I will pass it midway to Noah. This is Z twenty-two dash thirteen, an LDC text amendment to create a mixed-use zoning. We're really excited about this. I'm Samantha Novotny and then we've got Noah Schumer. Okay, so tonight, we are looking for, to Planning Commission to initiate a text amendment to the LDC and to also conduct a citizen review meeting, which is a required process of the LDC. And that's the official requested input right there. Just keep going with that. So a brief history, I don't expect anyone to read that. That's all captured in the staff report. It really is just to illustrate that mixed-use zoning has been of great interest to add as a tool to Gilbert. The point is to showcase that the efforts and attempts at putting together good mixed-use zoning has been in Gilbert's interest for a long time. And even as far back as two thousand and eleven, when there was an ASU graduate course, Capstone course, that collaborated with Gilbert to put together good guidelines, design guidelines, and how to move forward with a mixed-use zoning district that would work with Gilbert's needs. And then the one thing that I do want to highlight in here is the second to last one. It says January ninth, two thousand and nineteen, Planning Commission at that time did initiate an LDC text amendment as we are requesting of you tonight. But that case has since been withdrawn. And here we are again today with renewed efforts and ideas. So why is this needed in Gilbert? There's a lot of reasons, more than, that are listed up here. But staff really feels that there is a gap in our toolbox for properly administering the LDC and pairing that with our general plan. There's been noticeable increase in mixed-use proposals, some as, as you've seen recently and also tonight. We're seeing more innovative proposals come our way. It's really exciting to help Gilbert maintain its vibrancy and uniqueness. And as it stands, mixed-use projects require a lot of complex zoning configurations, development agreements. These are not necessarily bad things, but they can be cumbersome and are not the most transparent, as you can hear from residents that come out and really want to be a part of the process and have a say in what is developed around them. And Noah, I'll kick it off to you.
There's a high difference here. There we go. So if we're going to talk about a move that's, one of the primary goals is transparency, really moving things out of this more complex process of creating PADs or development agreements or things to achieve these mixed-use developments, which is kind of where the development market is moving more and more, we have to, to talk about that, we have to talk about the general plan and how this, this project would relate to actually achieving the publicly accountable goals of the general plan. And so you'll find in the general plan that the, the mixed-use zoning and implementing mixed-use zoning and encouraging mixed-use development is a foundational principle that's found throughout our general plan. In fact, it's mentioned thirty-five times throughout the, the general plan, throughout both the policy section and in the implementation steps section. What I've provided on the screen for you here is a implementation item in particular that is an exact verbatim line that's claims that one of our primary short-term implementation steps is to implement a mixed-use guidelines, I'm sorry, update the land development code to be including mixed-use development guidelines or standards that are consistent with the general plan. And then in addition, mixed-use development would also allow us to directly or indirectly achieve many of the other implementation steps that you will see here. Many of those implementation steps can be achieved, at least in part, especially the long-term ones, I mean, in part, by implementing mixed-use development standards that help us to move towards more innovative types of developments and ways that can probably manage density and community growth and a little bit more sustainable and a little bit more, ways that are more, more encouraging of livability and kind of increasing community distinctiveness and attractiveness. So again, it, it functions as a tool of implementing the goals, policies, and implementation steps already laid out in our general plan. So I just wanted to briefly home in on another policy as well, really on encouraging a balanced land use framework. All of, all four of these policies that I've pulled directly with quotes from the general plan demonstrate that are all things that mixed-use development can help us achieve. Placing compatible commercial services, greater diversity of housing types, high-quality housings for a variety of lifestyles and single developments, and maintaining livability. These are all things that can be achieved with mixed-use zoning. And without that mixed-use zoning and districts that can support that, it becomes much more difficult to achieve these goals and to work with developers in a transparent and constructive way to encourage more diverse, interesting types of developments. As a side note as well, the growth areas and character areas, which I failed to mention, also benefit from this type of zoning amendment because both of, many of our areas, such as the gateway character area and some of our growth areas, either explicitly mention mixed-use development as an integral part of shaping that character area or, or growth area, or we believe as a planning staff that this will aid us in achieving the goals found in those growth area and character area chapters of the general plan. Just to provide you in a mixed-use definition, it's actually already in our land development code. It was put there in two thousand and fourteen, when we created an opportunity to put multifamily in regional commercial zones, which we've rescinded because of some ways in which that was abused. You can see that it talks about the creation of coordinated development plans, integrating residential and non-residential uses in close proximity to one another with a lot of care given to the way that the site interacts, say, reducing traffic impacts and encouraging interactions between different uses. You'll see that in the live workshop and play kind of mantra in the, in the terms chapter of the general plan. So we've thought about this before and it's something that we use as an official definition and take really seriously in our planning work already. It's also not new to Gilbert. If you look around Gilbert at a variety of different scales, you'll see that there are different, different mixed-use developments that are already being put in place. Epicenter is probably the most recently opened one. That's just filling with tenants and is a very visible project. But there's a lot of different projects that also have a mixed-use component to them. And again, they vary in, at different scales. Verde is much more horizontal, for example. The Heritage Marketplace and some of the other Heritage District projects really are these kind of vertical mixed-use projects. And any amendment to create mixed-use zoning would have to consider how we can more easily create places at different scales like this that actually fit into the town and can help us to do these really high-quality projects in a way that's easier to administer, easier for the public to understand, and easier for you to make decisions on. So as a note, any amendment that's brought forth isn't rezoning anything, isn't doing anything to, with the land development code that would change any classifications of land. All of, all of that would have to be done by an applicant through a rezoning process or a general plan amendment if necessary, since any zoning amendments has to be in tandem with the general plan. And say, to create new districts, they have to correspond with appropriate general plan categories as well. And that would be a part of this. So in short, the, we are here to offer any feedback, answer any questions, anything related to the initiation of this text amendment. But we're requesting an initiation of that text amendment to the sections that are on the screen and the conduct of a citizen review meeting to have a discussion on this text amendment pertaining to the creation of ultimately three base zoning districts, a mixed-use small scale, a mixed-use large scale, and a mixed-use regional scale zoning district. So with that, Samantha and I are here to answer any questions about mixed-use zoning and anything that planning staff has discussed to this point regarding this project. Thank you.
All right. Questions? Yeah, Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In principle, I support mixed-use development. I think there's enough examples throughout the country of successful applications of this. Will all mixed-use developments go through a design review?
Commissioner Johnson and Chair Simon, yes. Any, any case would have to go through design review. This wouldn't provide any alternative channel. The goal is actually to bring these mixed-use developments back into more traditional channels of our design review and everything else. Treat them like normal zoning, zoning and design review cases.
So you have, then you have a mix master of regulations you have to review in a mixed-use development, correct?
Right. So right now, our zoning ordinance has limited opportunities for mixed-use development. You'll see that certain commercial districts offer the opportunity for integrating residential uses, loft above uses, for example. But other than that, to do mixed-use development, such as Egretopia, that's a great example. It usually requires a planned area development and a, often a development agreement and a range of other documents that have to be reviewed. And that takes time. It's, and it can be inefficient and intransparent at times as well. So this is an effort to correct those things.
So absent, pardon me, absent any really specific reference to specific zoning regulations, is there a kind of a waiver process or something where you have to, in advance, you know, open up the zoning regulations? Or as you go into more complex mixed development, are there waivers or changes that could be done through the design review process?
Commissioner Johnson and Chair Simon, just to understand your, just to understand the question, are you asking that pertaining to existing processes for, for mixed-use development? Or are you suggesting for the new ordinance?
The new ordinance.
The new ordinance.
I would say, Commissioner Johnson, Chair Simon, if they wanted to add a layer of creativity, they could do that with an additional PAD. That, that tool is not limited to them. But we're hoping that with this, these three mixed-use districts, we can capture and make transparent the regulations upfront and hopefully gain development that's more predictable and, and flexible upfront, rather than having the PAD with a ton of deviations to get creative.
Yeah. Thank you. I like the concept of placemaking. You create sort of, some creativity to give you some idea how to create, how to achieve some sense of placemaking, like Cooley and some other, which are models, I assume, of this sort of application.
Commissioner Johnson, correct. That was definitely a development that we've looked at as, as an analysis of why this is needed, both because of the positive development outcome that it has, and also sometimes the challenges in getting the type of mixed-use development and really well-designed projects that, that we want to, in order to achieve the vision for Cooley Station. So maybe to allay some concerns, in addition, we also would like to explore the, the concept of a, of a book of mixed-use development design standards as a way to provide some predictability in that placemaking that you mentioned, while also still providing an opportunity to kind of provide that dialogue between developers and planners, which you need to have in order to get a successful development.
And that's what I was getting at. Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Right. Commissioner Fay.
Thank you guys very much. Big fan of mixed use. But did I read that it had, in order, under our definition, it must involve residential?
Commissioner Fay, under the current definition that's taken just from the text of the zoning ordinance, it does mention residential and non-residential. However, we're writing these districts, particularly the regional district, with an eye to the idea that that would not be limited exclusively to residential. And that would be factored in a text amendment to ensuring that that definition works with the goals of the three new districts that we're proposing.
For example, offices over retail. Actually, I think we've got that.
Right.
In the Heritage District, don't we?
Right. We have to be able to make room for that because those types of developments are just as difficult, if not more difficult, to implement than a residential over non-residential, you know, a traditional four over one or what have you.
Perfect. I'm just, I just wanted, if, one, I figured I was actually probably misreading it. But if I wasn't misreading it, I wanted to make sure that we've built that flexibility in there.
You do, Commissioner Fay, you do raise a good point that we, that we should make sure that that term in this text amendment is included to make sure that everything lines up properly between these new districts in our term section. So thanks for the note. Thanks, Commissioner.
All right. Any other comments or questions, concerns? Commissioner Bianchi.
Thank you, Chair. Real quick. So you had talked about the mixed-use small, medium, large. Do you have an idea what those acreage minimum and maximums would be? Or is that something that you guys are going to kind of hash out through this process?
Commissioner Bianchi and Chair Simon, yes, that is something we are going to hash out. And you're going to see that. We didn't talk about it in this presentation, but we're going to bring forth the details of this ordinance in the ten-twenty meeting. It's a study session item. So you'll get that staff report and it'll be much longer than the one that you have now. And it'll contain the details of the entire ordinance, the design guidelines. So your, your question will be answered there. I don't want to give it away.
And I imagine we'll see this a couple of times through the process. So.
Yes, yes.
I echo the other commissioners. I think this will be a welcome addition. Thanks.
Right. Anything else? All right. Do you guys need a motion to approve at this point? So I will entertain a motion either way on this with, do we need a separate motion for each?
I don't think we need a motion. I think you just tell them to initiate.
Initiate it.
Provide and then do the, the meetings afterwards.
Okay. All right. So I grant you permission.
Chair Simon and Commissioners, thank you for the permission and thanks for, for listening to our presentation on mixed-use zoning.
All right. Thank you guys for all the work you're doing. Okay, administrative items. We will move on. Administrative items are the commission discussion and action. It is to the discretion of the majority of the commission regarding public input requests on any administrative item. Persons wishing to speak on administrative items should complete a public comment form indicating the item number on which you wish to address. The commission may or may not accept public comment. And I do not see any public comment on any administrative items. Do we have any, Eva? No? No? All right. We will jump from there. Twenty-twenty-three Planning Commission meeting minutes, right? Oh, the calendar. Consider approval of the twenty-twenty-three regular calendar meetings. Do we have that?
Yeah, it should be in the.
It's in the packet.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I will entertain a motion to approve or? Approve. Go ahead, Commissioner Johnson. You look like you're wanting to jump in on it. All right. Commissioner Johnson moves to approve the twenty-twenty-three Planning Commission meeting's calendar. Do I have a second? I'll second. I have a second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. And Planning Commission minutes, consider approval of minutes for the study session and regular meeting is September seventh, two thousand and twenty-two.
Chairman, I've moved to approve as presented.
I've got a motion to approve the minutes as presented. Do I have a second? By Commissioner Bianchi, do I have a second?
I was there. I'll second him.
I've got a second from Commissioner Fay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right. Communications. We do not have an executive session. Report from the chairman or members of the commission. I don't think I have anything to report. Anybody else have anything to report? No?
Just welcome to the new members.
Oh, yeah. Welcome. Glad to have you on board.
Thank you.
Glad for the, well, Commissioner Fay, you're.
Not you.
No, actually, we're excited to have, it's always good to have new insight.
Who did, who did, is not on the commission. No, I'm sorry, probably should have checked out.
Who did we lose?
Commissioner Johns.
Brian Johns.
Oh, Commissioner Johns.
All right, yes.
May I interrupt you back to the mixed use? You were supposed to open and close a citizen input.
Oh.
If we can revisit that, if we could revisit the next item.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, I'll go back to item number 22 on the agenda. The mixed use and zoning district, Z 22-13, I will open for public comment. As crickets are in the building, we will close public comment. And I will take a motion to approve. Do I need a motion again at this point? Or no, I just need to grant you permission. I ordain you with permission.
Doesn't, doesn't it take a motion to grant permission?
Okay, and so, Ava, we'll go back to you with Planning Service Managers. Current events, any comments, anything you'd like to add to the order?
Yes, I know it's been a very long night, but I would like to recognize Josh Rogers, our planner two. I don't know if he is still on the line. He was ill today, or he would have presented his cases, but he has resigned from the town, and tonight is his last planning commission meeting, and tomorrow is his last day with the town, and we're really going to miss Josh. He's worked for the town just over five years. At the last council meeting, he won the MVP award for BOLD. He's also been our specialist on billboards, on marijuana, on multifamily statistics, and he really carries a very heavy caseload for the department. So I just want to wish Josh well, and that he'll be very well missed here at the town.
We will definitely miss him, although he doesn't make cookies for us, so we won't miss him that much.
Yeah, okay. Just got the All-Star Award.
He just kind of dropped the mic and walked away.
Can we rescind that and give that to whoever was number two on the list?
Well, I have one more thing to.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, great. It's gonna get worse.
As I mentioned, Josh was here just over five years, and just today Samantha Navatney, who just presented mixed use, was presented with her five-year service award.
Awesome. Congratulations. You're, you're not tenuring your resignation, are you?
And Samantha will stay with us at least another five years.
All right. Well, perfect.
And just also to announce now, we will have a vacancy in our senior planner and our planner two, and we hope to be advertising for those positions shortly. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Unless there's no other items, we will go ahead and adjourn the meeting. I'll hit the gavel. There we go. We are adjourned. Thank you all for your time tonight. Have a wonderful evening, and we'll see you on the 20th at the Riparian, or at the Regional Library.
Well done. Yeah, I was expecting later, but well done in terms of, one, obviously avoiding.